The following is a production of Cary TV, the Town of Cary's government access channel.
Call to order the April 3 quasi judicial meeting of the Cary Town Council. And at this time I'd ask you to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved, second?
There's a motion and a second. Discussion, call in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Our first quasi judicial hearing is for the Busy Bee preschool special use. An overview of the hearing procedures and detailed rules are attached to the printed agenda. All speakers who want to speak during this public hearing must be administered an oath by the town clerk's administrative assistant. We'll pause just a moment to allow these individuals who want to speak at this public hearing to approach the town clerk's administrative assistant and receive their oaths. And while that is going on, I'll ask council members if they've had any site visits, ex parte communications, financial relationships, special knowledge, or close relationship to an affected person to disclose, starting on my left, Mr. Yerha.
I have not.
I have not?
Mr. Frank?
I have not.
I have not. Ms. Smith?
I received one email from someone about the topic. I recognized the topic and I replied that I could not have a discussion with them. And I redirected her to staff.
Okay, this won't...
I didn't really read it. Once I got to the point where I realized what it was, I quit reading.
Okay, won't impact your decision at all?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I haven't had any contact.
None.
Okay, thank you. We'll wait just a moment while people get sworn in.
Well, we actually all look like dwarves.
Yeah.
Especially me and Donna.
Get a new picture. That is pretty funny. Okay, Don. You know my picture that hangs here? It's now 12 years old. I like it though. It's a little bit outdated.
I wouldn't change it.
A little bit, I know. Don's got a really good picture. Oh, here's his journal. Okay, so I think that's it. You just passed it.
Oh, there it is.
Under email and then it says journal.
Really look at it. Yeah, I know where this is.
We are at the point where council members have disclosed whether or not they've had any ex parte communications. And we disclose what we knew. And so at this time, it's my duty to ask if anyone has any objection to a council member participating in this quasi judicial hearing. If so, I need you to come forward now. If not, we'll proceed and open the quasi judicial hearing. I will point out the rules on the agenda. They're very important. There's a one hour time limit for this quasi judicial hearing. We ask that for large groups, that you have a spokesperson. Each speaker should adhere to a five minute time limit. And please do not be repetitive, and I'm gonna repeat that. If you're repetitive... If you're repetitive, I will interrupt you or the attorney will interrupt you because this is a quasi judicial hearing, as I said. This is testimony and we don't need repetitive testimony. I know it sounds kinda harsh, but this is a little different from a normal, regular council meeting. Having said all that, we'll open the quasi judicial hearing and I'll turn it over to Ms. Granin, Ms. Granin who will introduce this hearing. Ms. Granin?
Thank you, good evening. This is a request for a special use permit for a large daycare home located at 1202 Lyary Lane on approximately .28 acres. The subject property is located in the Ivy Meadows subdivision. The property is highlighted here in yellow. From the vicinity map, you can see its proximity to the Cary Town Center Mall located to the northwest of the property. The property is at the intersection of Lyary Lane and Ivy Lane. It's the parcel here. This is a photograph taken from the street of the front of the house. It's improved with a single family detached residential dwelling. And a view from the street on Ivy Lane showing the property posting. This is a view also taken from Ivy Lane of the side and the back portion of the house that shows the location of a fence around the subject property. And a little further out from the street, from Ivy Lane, looking back toward the backyard of the subject property. Cary's Land Development Ordinance defines a large daycare home as a home intended for the care of seven to 12 children at any given time. It may be permitted as a special use in a single family residential dwelling on lots that are 12,000 square feet or greater, provided the following provisions are met. Licensing by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services Division of Child Development is required. The applicant must obtain a special use approval from the Town Council. There may be no building modifications except as required by North Carolina State Building Code, so no additions put on the house. But if a sprinkler system or a handicap ramp needs to be installed, that would be an exception. The applicant must provide a sketch of the site showing the locations of fenced in playground area and driveway and parking. The principal person operating the daycare must reside on the premises and no more than one employee who does not reside on the premises may work in the home. There must be adequate off-street parking per the Land Development Ordinance Table 7.8-1. And if there is not adequate parking and parking needs to be added, then there is criteria to install evergreen landscape screening of that parking area. The subject property is zoned residential 12, which requires a minimum lot size of 12,000 square feet. The property was recorded in 1971, Book of Maps 71, page 375. And it does meet the minimum 12,000 square foot requirement. The property is just slightly larger than that. The applicant did provide a sketch showing the location of the home, the parking, and the play area. And provided information to show that they complied with the LDO standards for parking requirements. There is a long driveway that is double the width of the majority of the driveways in the neighborhood and can accommodate two cars at one time, so it can easily hold more than four cars at a time. And then there is also a single garage on the property. Property owners within 400 feet of the subject property were notified by mail. At this time, I'd like to briefly review the criteria for the special use approval. That the use be in compliance with the comprehensive plan, not endanger public health, be reasonably necessary, not harm adjacent property values, be in harmony with the surrounding area, be served by public services, and not cause undue traffic problems. This concludes staff's presentation. And following the public hearing, staff is available for your questions.
Thank you. At this time, we'll call on the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Good evening. Excuse me, my name is David York. I'm with Smithmore Leatherwood. My address, 434 Fayetteville Street, Suite 2800 Raleigh 27601. I'm here on behalf of Benah Mazzuska, the owner and operator of Busy Bee. She'll be my first witness, so she's already prepped. With me tonight are, as I mentioned, Ms. Mazzuska, Tim Clark from our firm who's a land planner, Gretchen Vivin Strindle with Remax Broker, Frank Price with Weatherall Engineering, traffic engineer. And then there are some parents here. We may just have one or two of them speak, because there are several here. But our task tonight is to put on evidence sufficient that this council can make the findings necessary to grant the special use permit for a large home daycare at 1202 Lyary Lane. With council's permission, and in the interest of time, many of my questions will be leading questions to speed up our presentation. Please let me know if you would like a witness to elaborate on a given answer. And as I said, the first witness would be Ms. Mazzuska. I know I'm saying that wrong, I'm sorry. And she will be testifying to address compliance first with LDO Section 534L, which were the first set of criteria that were set forth by Deborah, as well as to explain the reason for her request. Please state your name, address, and current employment for the record.
My name is Bushina Machiewska. My address is 1202 Lyary Lane, Cary, North Carolina, 27511.
Okay, can you tell the council about your professional background?
I finished my two-year degree to work early childhood education. And I'm working with the children since 1999. And I enjoy working with the children. I love children, that's why I am doing. I have also another career, but I love to working with the children and help so many parents who are in need for quality care, childcare.
Are you the owner and operator of Busy Bee?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and do you reside at that location?
Yes, I do.
And you're the applicant of this special use permit request?
Yes.
And are you familiar with the application?
Yes.
And are the contents of the application true and accurate to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Do you maintain the appropriate licenses from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services Division of Child Development to own and operate Busy Bee?
Yes.
Are you proposing any building modification with this request?
No.
Does Busy Bee have any employees other than you?
Not now, I'm just the only one by myself.
Do you have plans on bringing in a new employee if this is granted?
Yes, I'm planning to employ one qualified teacher.
Okay, and do you have...
Same.
I'm sorry.
Same vision like I do.
And do you have a privileged license to operate Busy Bee from the Town of Cary?
Yes, I do.
And then briefly, if you could, just explain why you're requesting this special use permit?
There is a high demand for quality childcare. My goal is to fulfill that mission. Currently, I have two parents that have newborns and are asking me to help care for them. It would be convenient for the parents and highly beneficial for both siblings to be in the same childcare facility. I would like to enhance my preschool by hiring an additional qualified teacher that share the same vision. I am devoted to keeping my property in the best condition possible. I am no way trying to change the character of the neighborhood. I hope that my effort and commitment to my neighborhood will be recognized one day. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to present myself.
Thank you, I have no further questions of her unless the council does. Thank you. I'd next like to call Tim Clark. Mr. Clark's testimony will address how this special use permit request meets specific criteria set forth in LDO 383, and in particular, criterias 1, 2, 3, 5, and 6. Please state your name, address, and current employment for the record.
My name is Tim Clark. My home address is 827 The Village Circle, Raleigh. I'm a land use planner with Smithmore Leatherwood. Been employed there for about seven years.
Okay, if you could explain or tell the council about your education and professional background and experience?
I have a bachelor's in geography, a master's in business administration. I've been, worked as a professional planner for about 33 years. Been a certified planner since 1989. 21 of those years, I worked for Wake County. And I'm beginning my third term on the Wake County Board of Adjustment.
Are you familiar with the Busy Bee Home Daycare?
Yes, it's a small home daycare as per Cary's Land Development Ordinance. And it's licensed by the North Carolina Division of Child Development in the Department of Health and Human Resources.
Okay, are you familiar with the location and surroundings of the daycare?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and are you familiar with the Town's comprehensive plan or other plans, or official plans, manuals, or documents that might relate to this area?
Yes, I am. It's designated as low-density residential. It's in close proximity to commercial, which is the Cary Town Center.
Okay, is it your professional opinion... Well, at this point, I'd just like to offer Tim up as an expert planner to testify as to the items that he's prepared to testify to. Is it your professional opinion that the proposed use generally conforms with the comprehensive plan or other official plans, manuals, and documents of the town for this area?
Yes, in putting assisting in the preparation of the application that's before you tonight, I found that it generally conforms to the Cary comprehensive plan. There are other adopted plans of the town that do not appear to apply to this request.
As a professional planner, are you familiar with types of land uses that enhance the successful operation and functionality of areas and communities or provide essential services to communities?
Yes, I am.
I'm sorry, is a home daycare such a use?
Yes, it is just as important as shopping, schools, and healthcare is to a community. So is quality home daycare. As you're well aware, Cary and Wake County continue to grow and both our younger and older population is also growing as an overall percentage of the population.
Is it your professional opinion that the proposed special use would enhance the successful operation and functionality of this area as well as provide essential services to this community?
Yes.
Previously, you testified that you were familiar with the location and surrounding of the property in question. Is it your professional opinion that the proposed use is in harmony with the scale, bulk, coverage, density, and character of the neighborhood in which it's located?
It's very much in character with the rest of the neighborhood. The house and lot are of similar size as those in the other houses in the neighborhood. The back of the property is fenced, screening outdoor play from view and helps to block sound.
Is it your professional opinion that the proposed use is located appropriately with respect to transportation facilities, water supply, fire and police protection, waste disposal, and similar facilities?
Ivy, there's direct driveway access off Lyary Lane. It's a corner lot. Ivy Lane then connects to Walnut Street, which provides access to the Cary community. And by way of Maynard Road, US Highway 1 and 64, the transportation network serves the proposed use well. Municipal services such as water, sewer, garbage collection, police, and fire protection, and other public services are provided to the site by the Town of Cary.
Thank you. You said as part of your experience, you're a planner. And were you also zoning administrator? Is that the right title for Wake County?
I was zoning administrator from 1986 to 1994.
And in your years as planner and zoning administrator, are you aware of any home daycare materially endangering the public health or safety?
I never remember anything to that degree or that that was a complaint or a situation that I dealt with as zoning administrator.
Okay, that's all I have for Mr. Clark unless the council would like to ask him any questions. Proceed. Thank you. Next, I'd like to call Frank Price. Mr. Price's testimony will address compliance with LDO Section 534L-1D, which is the parking availability on the site, as well as how this request meets criterias number 2 and number 7 set forth in Section 383. Mr. Price, if you could state your name, address, and current employment for the record?
Franklin R. Price, known as Frank. My home address is 107 Stone Lane, Clayton, North Carolina.
And your current employment?
Current employment is with Weatherall Engineering, who are located on Jones Franklin Road.
And please tell the council about your educational background and professional experience.
I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering and a master's degree in transportation engineering from NC State University. I have done graduate work at Georgia Tech in urban planning and graduate work at Ole Miss in engineering management. I have been in this ballgame or in this transportation business for approximately 50 years. I was with the North Carolina Department of Transportation for 31 years. And I've worked with various private engineering firms doing work for the state and municipal governments, as well as private developers since then.
And we'd like to offer up Frank Price as an expert to testify as to matters of traffic and transportation. Mr. Price, are you familiar with the Busy Bee Home Daycare being discussed tonight?
Yes, I am.
Are you familiar with the proposed special use request to increase the enrollment of the home daycare up to 12 children?
Yes, I am.
Are you familiar with a single car garage and driveway at 1202 Lyary Lane?
Yes, sir. I visited the site on two different occasions and I am familiar with that.
Okay, according to LDO Table 7.8-1, a large home daycare must accommodate four parking spaces plus one if there's an employee not living at the house for a maximum of five parking spaces. Is that correct?
That is correct. And the daycare currently has a single car garage, which accommodates one parked vehicle. The double driveway will, if need be, can accommodate six.
All right, thank you. In preparation for your testimony tonight, did you study the traffic generated by Busy Bee?
Yes, I did.
And what did your study reveal?
The study revealed that during the peak hour, in the afternoon of March 25, there were four vehicles that stopped or parked in the driveway at Busy Bee and picked up children. A light number during the morning of the 26, the peak hour of the morning of the 26, also stopped, parked in the driveway, and dropped off students.
And did you have occasion to observe other traffic not associated with Busy Bee during that same time?
Yes, traffic on Lyary is very light. The peak hour, there was only 18 vehicles that passed the driveway. There's a little bit more traffic on Ivy Lane during the peak hour. There were 34 vehicles that passed the Lyary intersection.
Based on your study, are you comfortable offering your professional opinion as to whether the proposed special use permit would cause undue traffic congestion or create a traffic hazard or unsafe pedestrian pathway?
This is a residential neighborhood. The traffic in the neighborhood in general is relatively light compared to some comparable-sized neighborhoods. The vehicles arriving and departing the driveway were all at random. There was never more than a few minutes that there were more than two vehicles and they were parked side by side in the driveway while pickups and drop-offs occurred. They departed the driveway without any hesitation from cars passing on Lyary Lane by backing out and proceeding to their ultimate destination.
And did you have opportunity to observe a school bus drop off children during the time you were there?
In the afternoon, approximately 4:00 PM, what I took to be a elementary group of students were dropped off on the corner of Ivy Lane and Lively. The bus then continued down Ivy Lane in a northern direction. The three of the students walked in the edge of the street, up Lively to houses where I'm sure they reside. One of the students was picked up by a car that was waiting on Ivy Lane.
Okay, are there sidewalks on either Ivy Lane or?
No, no sidewalks on either side of Ivy Lane or Lively.
Did Busy Bee have any traffic during the time of the bus drop off?
No, not during the time the bus was stopped to have the students exit.
Okay, and then in the morning, during that peak hour, was the bus there?
No, it did not appear during the morning.
Okay, so is it your professional opinion, then, based on your study and your observations, that the proposed special use would not cause undue traffic congestion or create a traffic hazard or unsafe pedestrian pathway?
Yes, it is.
And so is it safe to say that the proposed use as to traffic, transportation, and pedestrians will not endanger public health or safety?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. I have no further questions of Mr. Price unless the council does. Next, I would like to, excuse me, call up Gretchen Vivens Trendle. Mrs. Vivens Trendle's testimony will address how the request meets Criteria Number 4 set forth in LDO Section 383. Hi, Gretchen, thank you. Could you state your name, address, and current employment for the record?
Gretchen Vivens Trendle, 114 Belveste Drive in Kerry, and I'm a real estate agent.
And how long have you been a broker?
Eight years.
Okay, and as a licensed broker, have you been called upon to render opinions as to property values and circumstances that impact property values?
I have.
And have you offered opinions? When you have offered opinions as to property values, have these opinions been consistent with value estimates offered by licensed appraisers where that was the case?
Yes, they have.
And have you rendered professional opinions on the impact of adjacent and abutting land uses on property values?
I have.
And do you have experience with home daycares?
I do. I have ran a home daycare in Kerry for three years.
Before becoming a broker? Okay, with your real estate experience and your knowledge of home daycares, are you able to render a professional opinion as to impacts, if any, that a home daycare would have on adjoining or abutting properties?
I do.
This time, I'd like to offer her up as an expert to testify as to property values. Are you familiar with this special use request?
I am.
And are you familiar with the subject property?
I am.
And have you conducted a study to determine what impacts, if any, the proposed home daycare expansion would have on adjoining or abutting properties?
I have.
And what conclusions did you draw from your study and report?
Well, I looked at a 24-month period in increments of six months, and I looked at both Ivy Meadows and the neighboring communities around it. And I found that the only factors that I could find that affected the price of a home was the style of the home and the foreclosures in the area when there were foreclosures that were surrounding it. I looked at things like the road noise, the things that I know that impact buyers, like road noise of 40 in the back, the busy road of Walnut. And I looked at the impact of the home daycare center, and none of these had any impact on the values of the homes in that community or the mall being adjacent to the neighborhood. I also looked at several other home daycares and their impact on neighborhoods in Kerry and found no impact for the daycare centers.
Okay, based on your overall study and research on the impact to adjoining and abutting property values, were you able to form an opinion as to whether large home daycares, excuse me, would substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property?
Yes, they would not.
Okay.
They would not have an impact.
All right, thank you. I have no further questions if the council does.
Proceed.
As far as witnesses that I'm prepared to question, that exhausts my witness list. However, I understand that there may be parents of both current and present children attending this daycare who would like to address the council, and I've asked them to address Criteria Number 3, the benefit to the community. I think that's the most appropriate for them. So there's several, but I think we may just hear from a couple, if that's all right.
Mr. York, why don't you present maybe one or two, and then have the others stand to be recognized?
That would be fine. Thank you. I'll have them speak first, and then I'll have them stand, if that's all right, so that they know what they're agreeing to.
Hi, my name's Sarah Ryan. I live in Kerry at 105 Ribbon Lane. I took my children to Miss Ben about five years ago, and she's wonderful. I have Megan, seven, and Michael, six now, so they go to elementary school. But she took very well of my children. She made sure that they ate very well. She coddled them very well. She totally trained my son, fed my children organic food. There were times when my kids wanted to go to Miss Ben's on the weekends, and I got over that kind of fast, but she was very kind to them, and she was very, very patient with them. And to tell you the truth, we came from Ohio, and I thank God for her every day, because if it wasn't for her, my children, you know, who knows? I mean, they are who they are because of their mother, of course, but she was very good to our family, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I get you to move to your left?
Pardon?
Could I get you to move? Thank you.
This one? Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Linda Velto. I live at 1127 Askem Drive in Kerry. That's a neighborhood that is adjacent to Ivy Meadows, but my house is actually literally around the corner from Lively. I live about a quarter mile from the daycare. When my husband and I relocated to Kerry in the year 2000, I had a five-year-old son and a two-and-a-half-month-old baby. And we came here on a weekend looking for a house. We found a rental house in the Walnut Hills subdivision on a different street, and decided to go with that, and we had two days to find a house. And the last question I had then was daycare for my child, for my baby in particular. And we found out about the Busy Bee daycare while we were here that weekend, and Ben arranged to meet with us on a weekend and met my daughter, and sat down and cradled her on the floor, and has been my daughter's second mother ever since. I was so overwhelmed, I could call her a godsend by having that daycare in that neighborhood so close by. It definitely set my mind at rest to know that I had a licensed place to bring my young daughter. Two years later, when we decided to stop being renters and purchase a home, we bought our house on Askem Drive, right around the corner from the daycare. And I can't say that the presence of the daycare was the deciding factor, but it was certainly a very strong factor in why we bought our home where we did, because we were already in at this wonderful daycare. So we are now walking distance from Busy Bee. And that neighborhood base of the daycare has continued to be helpful for us as my daughter aged up into going to school. We are on the same bus route. So if there was a morning that I couldn't get her on the bus because my work schedule was kind of goofed up, then Ben would help her get on the bus, or at least I could drop her there, and she could wait at that corner, and I knew she was safe. So having her close by has been extremely helpful. Ben gave amazing care from the time that I met her in the year 2000, but over time, I've seen a pattern of her trying to go through self-improvement. She obtained her degree. She went through the voluntary, the star rating system. She didn't have to try to achieve higher stars, but she put herself through that to do it. She keeps the property up well. I've seen her improve just the paperwork, the procedures, the routines to do more and more structured activities that are really positive for the kids. And I bring this up because I believe that, knowing Ben for as long as I have, that she would only make this request to expand her daycare if she knew she could do it, not just competently, but to excel at doing it. And I think that that is something that is so important in our neighborhoods is to have daycare that's not just okay, that's not just competent, but that is excellent and outstanding, and I believe that's what we have in Ben. And I also think that having it right there in the neighborhood, not someplace you have to drive to, makes it attractive for a family. When it comes time for me to sell my house, I hope I get to sell it to a young family that's looking for daycare, because I say Ben is right around the corner. I've recommended her to so many people over the years because she doesn't just do a good job, she does an outstanding job, and I hope that she gets to offer that to more kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
And at the risk of disappointing several more parents from them being able to get up here and speak, I mean, we may on a rebuttal if we think it's appropriate. But at this point, I'd like to ask all the parents who share in the sentiments that's been presented by the first two parents to stand, please. Thank you. That concludes our case in chief, and we would reserve any time we have for rebuttal. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. York, and thank you for keeping it brief. It is my duty to call on those other than Mr. York's witnesses to present arguments and evidence in support of the application if they wish to do so at this time. So I'd invite any forward that would like to do that. If not, we'll proceed. And at this time, I'll invite cross-examinations of witnesses who testified in support of the request. Anyone to cross-examine a witness. Okay, moving forward. We'll now open the hearing to those opposed to the request, and I would ask that you approach the podium one at a time, and I'll call on each speaker as we go forward. And at this time, I'll invite the first speaker forward to oppose the request.
Hello? I haven't been in these chambers before, so if I act a little awkward, it's because I am feeling that way. My name is Melbourne Bailey, Jr. I live at 1205 Lively Lane, which is across the street and one house down from 1202 Lively Lane. So instead of being directly across from one house, over. I've lived at this location for 26 years. I'm currently retired. In the years prior to retirement, I was Assistant Chief for Groundwater Planning with the State Division of Water Quality. I do have a bachelor's degree in geography. Well, it was actually a double major with geology and geography, and my master's work was in geology, which probably won't qualify me as an expert witness, so the things that you're going to hear from me are related to observation. We have not opposed the existence of a daycare at this location. What I am in opposition to is a special use permit to expand the daycare to 12 children. My opposition is based primarily on three factors. It has been my observation and experience that the resident does not reside at 1202 Lively Lane as required by Kerry ordinances. This comment refers to special use criteria number one. Two, I believe that the application has provided inaccurate information about availability of parking at the site. This comment references special use criteria number seven. And I believe that a large daycare home will add to the non-residential character of my neighborhood. This is in reference to special use criteria number five. So I, well, so starting at number one, regarding my observation that applicant does not reside at 1202 Lively Lane, I can tell you that for years, going back at least to 2009, the applicant has left every evening after the children were picked up and then returned every morning, usually in time to open the doors to parents and children. Others will speak later to support my experience. And if you would prefer that the people that are going to support my experience just stand, we can have them do that. That would be fine with me. Would you prefer that now?
We'd much prefer that. We don't want to be repetitive.
What you cannot find out by having them stand is that these are not people that do not live in the neighborhood, but these are actually all people that live within a few houses of where the special use permit is being requested. To support my observation and experience, I'd like to distribute the Wake County real estate data and a copy of the deed for other homes. Basically, the applicant, in this case, owns a home with her husband at another location that is about seven miles away. And so she does own, at least according to the public records, she does own this home by herself. It was originally bought by the person that is now her husband, and then the deed was transferred to her. So the...
Mr. Bailey, could I interrupt just a second? When you pass out things, would you hand one to Mr. York at the same time?
Yes. So that's the information that I have, and you have heard my experience, and you've also seen the other people in our neighborhood that also have the same experience and observation. Secondly, relating to parking, one thing I'd like to say is that the application did not say the same thing that the persons or persons that talked to you this evening. The application says the site's driveway is wide enough to accommodate six vehicles, three vehicles parked side by side between Lively Lane and the front of the house, meeting the requirements of Section 5.3.4-L1. And so I'd like to distribute, then, photographs that I took personally, and the date and the time for these photographs is on these sheets. The first one, you'll notice, has two cars in the driveway. Now, most of the comment that we heard this evening was about current conditions, and I am going to be presenting information about current conditions because I'm not a traffic engineer and not qualified to tell you what's going to happen when they go from five children to 12 families.
Mr. Bailey?
But this is...
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to make a point. We had a timer, but since you're giving testimony on behalf of several people, I'm going to allow you to continue. I just wanted to make that point in case people are observing the red light flashing.
Okay, thank you. So the first photograph, then, is of two cars in the driveway. And this is a 20-foot driveway. And what you can see is that three cars can't park side by side, and there's no way to turn them so that they are parallel to the home of the street either, not in this driveway. In the second photograph, you'll see three cars in this driveway, and you can see where that is as it relates to the end of the driveway. And our concern, of course, is that with 12 children, as opposed to five, that this driveway is going to fill up really fast, okay? And that's going to leave people on the street. This is a connector street, a 24-foot street. It's not Ivy Lane, which I believe is a 30-foot or more street. So this is a connector street. So this is a connector street. And if you look at the third photograph, what you see is what happens when two people park on each side of Laurley Lane. Okay? And the, so, and you see the school bus stopping, stopping at the, the school bus stop on the, on the corner. Well, if you move down through these pictures, then you actually see the school bus coming down between those two cars that are parked on each side of the road. We, as, as people that live in this neighborhood, we do believe that we should be able to park a car on the street. If, if we then, in the morning and the evening, when the school bus comes, actually have people waiting for, to get into the driveway. If, if you have a small child that you cannot, that cannot walk, it takes 10 to 15 minutes to get the child in the house. Maybe that's an opinion. But it takes, obviously, it takes a while, and we've observed, I have observed, that it takes, that they have to park, just like the picture shows, and then they have to take people inside. So they can't just drop kids off that are one or two or three years old. They have to walk them into the house. This school bus driver then, for the next number five photograph, deserves a medal for, for this. This was this morning, just by the way. And the reason there's only one school bus that we took for pictures today is because it's, it's, it's-
Spring break.
It's spring break. Okay? So there are normally three school buses in the morning and three, three, three school buses in the evening. So, so this is the one year-round bus this morning because the traditional schools are not open. And if you look at the last picture, that's actually looking down the street away from this property, and what you see is that going, that bus going through past two cars that are parked in front of their homes, and you see the pedestrian. Again, there are no sidewalks. So I believe that this leaves a very much different impression than the impression by the, by the experts about, about the potential effect on traffic that may occur as we expand this daycare. And I, I do have some other photographs, which I just won't show you, but there's limited line of sight coming up around the corner as you're, as you're coming up Ivy Lane. Third is simply the, the neighborhood. So down at the end of Laurley Lane, there is a halfway house. Down at the other end of Ivy, there it has been a, a multiple teenager, unrelated family home. And, and what we're seeing as, as residents is that we're seeing our neighborhood go from low-density residential to basically commercial. And, and, and it clearly has an impact on those of us that have children or grandchildren. And, and for, for those reasons, I, I oppose this special use permit.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Any questions, I guess? Do I, do I answer questions or?
We could possibly call you up at, at a future time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey spoke of residential character. He spoke of issues with parking. He spoke of an observation that the applicant does not reside. These are the reasons for his opposition. I would invite other speakers forward that have additional comments to add.
Hi, my name is Karen Mitchener. I live at, right beside Ms. Majuska at 1204 Laurley Lane. And the only thing that I want to address is her residency. I've been here for two and a half years. We moved here because it was a quiet residential neighborhood, had no idea that there was a daycare. And once this became, once we got the notice that she wanted to increase her capacity, I went and did some research, and it, she needed to reside there. And my only request is for them to find out if she's a registered voter at 1202 Laurley Lane. Is her vehicle, has it always been registered since she started this business in 1994? Or 1999, I'm sorry. And where was she counted on the census? Because for the requirements, a guide for home daycare providers in the town of Cary, she has to reside there. And I was not aware of this at the time because she, she leaves at the end of the day, and it's her business, and I never questioned the fact that it was her business and there was any kind of requirement for residency. So everything that Mr. Bailey went over was pretty much how I feel, only it's in more technical terms. But my concern is she doesn't live there, and she may be violating those laws. And I just want that to be brought. If they could do the research and find out where her residency is, it's just a simple request. Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers that have additional comments to add in opposition?
Hi, I only want to pass out handouts. I'll just take a second. My name is Hetta Jennings. I live at 1040 Ivy Lane. I've lived there for 41 years. I'm very aware of the property at 1202 Laurley Lane. I've watched this property for years and years and years because, oh, I'm sorry. It was very obvious to me that the house was empty, but it wasn't empty. It was being as, used as a daycare. But we didn't understand that because there was just no reason to think anybody was living there. But I have handouts for the property. I went on the Wake County tax report and pulled up the properties. There's nine copies that could be shared by the council members showing the property that-
Could you hand those to the clerk, please?
-her and her husband own in another section of town in Cary. And the time that they bought that property was 2001, before they even started a daycare in our neighborhood. So I have no objection to her running a daycare there. I just want it to be done legally. And my, my complaint is, no, don't expand it, and let's make sure that she is running it legally. It's been run there for 10 to 12 years, and I think she's been in violation, and nobody has stood up and called anybody's attention to it. She is registered to vote in our precinct. I checked on that, and she can have her cars registered at that, that address, but that doesn't mean she's living there. All of us in the neighborhood know the house is vacant at night and on weekends, not just in the past year or two. I'm talking years. So we need for that to be fixed, and whatever you, council decides, we'll abide by. But I wanted to make you aware of it, that she's not going by the rules. There's a daycare that was operated on Ivy Lane for almost 19 years. The woman that did it just recently stopped two years ago because of a cancer problem. She's here tonight with the neighborhood. She resided in the neighborhood. Everybody knew her. They knew she operated the daycare. I've never met this lady, never even seen her in the neighborhood. So there's a lot of things that just don't add up. It's very secretive what was going on in that home for years. It was kind of like a neighborhood joke. What's going on there? Nobody's there on weekends, and nobody's there at night. And so, you know, because there was no obvious disturbances, nobody did anything. But we need, I strongly oppose it being stretched to 12 children, and I'd like for her to really reside there if she continues to allow, to be allowed to operate, then she needs to live in that residence. Thank you.
Thank you. We've had four people now give testimony on residing on the property. Is there any additional testimony other than residing at the property?
Or parking.
Or parking.
Hello, my name is Teri Snyder. I live at 1117 Ivy. My property abuts the back fence of the yard of this property that is in question. My concerns are actually of the safety. We had this discussion with Mr. Bailey of the school bus and its problems this morning. My children have only just tracked back into school, and they ride the bus every morning that they're with me. My husband and I are separated, so some mornings he has them, some mornings I have them. But every day that I have them, they ride the bus in the mornings. They ride the bus every single day after school because I have them after school every day. This bus comes down Ivy Lane every morning. It makes that turn onto Laurley Lane every morning. It does not continue down Ivy, not ever. Our bus stop is at the fire hydrant at the front corner of this property, and I have pictures that I can then bring down in just a moment and disseminate if you'd like. The side of this property down along Ivy has trees that I assume were built, planted for privacy. These trees are not being kept off of the road at all. If you stand in my driveway, the road curves just slightly to go to Laurley, and this curve is absolutely blind. I cannot pull into my driveway nose-first and then back out. I have, on at least four separate occasions in the last four months, nearly had the back end of my car taken off with my children in it. You cannot back out of my driveway to see there. In order to see the corner of Ivy and Laurley Lane, you must walk out of my driveway eight feet into the main road on Ivy to be able to see that corner, which means if we have additional traffic coming in, we're going to be in this position of having-
Ms. Snyder, I'm, I'm really sorry to interrupt you, and I, I don't want to be perceived as being rude at all.
No, not at all. My concern is the safety of this bus stop at that corner.
Let me read something to you. This is from state law. It doesn't really have anything to do with, with what these folks at this table can hear and can't hear, but state law says that the term competent evidence shall not be deemed to include-
This is absolute observation of what is happening in our, in our, at this property, at the street corner.
What you can testify to is the increase in vehicular traffic resulting from a proposed development.
No, my concern is only about that. My concern is the safety, which I can observe at this corner, watching the school bus make that turn this morning.
Ms. Snyder, please.
Now, our observation-
Ms. Snyder, please. Go ahead. Ms. Silverstein.
What, what the state statute says is that opinion of lay, testimony of lay witnesses as to any of the following is prohibited. One of them is the increase in vehicular traffic resulting from a proposed development would pose a danger to the public's safety. So that's just something they're really not supposed to listen to, and I'm sure you wouldn't want to have, have this-
Certainly not.
-hearing attacked-
Nope, certainly not.
...because inappropriate evidence was considered.
So my question then to you is, if we are expanding this, is there a way to make this corner safer for the situation? And that is all I'm asking for.
Thank you.
To make sure the property is being kept up in such a fashion as to make that entire corner safer.
Thank you. Summarizing, we've had residency testify several times, inadequate parking, non-residential in character, and safety. Any other comments?
Good evening. My name is Eleanor Moore. I live at 1043 Ivy Lane, two houses down the street from the daycare. I have a bachelor's degree in elementary education, K through 8. I ended up my years working at Nortel as the Senior Executive Secretary. Okay, I just had a couple of points on, on the first application that you showed that had the red line going around the yard. That is incorrect. The fence does not go where it is shown on that application. It actually starts at the back of the deck, down to the back of the property, across the back, and then up to the back of the garage, not the front of the garage. So that is one thing that was not correct on the initial application. And my other question was, originally, when I looked this up, it said 15,000 square feet was the property that you were supposed to have, and that was, I looked it up, and it was done three days after we got the letter. When I went to confirm what I had read, magically, it says 12,000 feet, and that was done about three, four days ago, and I have pictures of the acrobat document showing when the modifications were done. And I was wondering why all of a sudden has this changed to accommodate that piece of property? Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, we're within five minutes of reaching the one-hour time limit. At the end of one hour, we have three options, and I don't even think I can remember. Continue, stop, and postpone till another time, and I think-
Or finish.
Or finish.
That's, that's continue, right. So those are our options, just letting you know. Having said that, we are still in the opposition testimony. We've heard, I think I have now five reasons in opposition. If there's any additional reasons.
Good evening, Mr. Bailey, Town Counsel. My name is Chuck Mitchener. I live at 1204 Laurley Lane, which is the property that sits directly to the east of the daycare center, on the driveway side. My bedroom is about 25 feet from the garage that you see in the picture depicting the daycare. And I'll try not to be repetitive here. I agree with everything that has been said in opposition, and I do oppose this request for a special exemption. The only thing I could add that would be different would be familiarizing you with my experience with living there for the last two and a half years. We moved into this neighborhood because it was quiet. We planned on retiring here, and I have, this is my first week of retirement. I've been working with the EMC Corporation for the last almost 10 years, and normally I'm gone from, say, 7:30 in the morning until about 5:30 in the afternoon. Recently, I've been able to make observations all day long. And what I found is that because there are no sidewalks on either side of the street, and there's a 25 mile an hour speed limit on this road, if you're walking past a parked car and someone comes up the street, 25 miles an hour may not seem like very fast, but it does if you're standing next to that vehicle. And there's a number of people who also make use of this particular property on Laurley Lane, dog walkers, exercisers, joggers. There's a woman that runs two or three times a day. We see her up and down Laurley Lane. There are FedEx trucks, there are UPS trucks, there are mail trucks, people delivering mail, and other vendors, you know, contractors that are in the area doing work up and down that street. To, to say that the, the traffic is light there is a bit of an understatement, I would I wouldn't say that it's extremely busy, but for a small street that's about 100 yards long, the idea of inviting even more traffic into that neighborhood is something that I wouldn't like to see. So again, I'd just like to say that I oppose this as well. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the clerk if we've reached our time limit. Counsel, we have a decision to make. What's your pleasure?
Continue.
By consensus, we will continue. Is there any other additional testimony and additional evidence in opposition? Seeing none, we'll move forward. It's now to, now time to open it up to cross-examination. I want to invite Mr. York back.
I'm not going to cross-examine anybody. I'm just going to bring on some rebuttal witnesses, if that's all right, at the appropriate time.
I believe this is the time.
This is the time.
Yeah, this is your time.
Sorry about that. Let's see, two, we'll, we'll attack the residency first. I'm going to ask Bennah if he'll come back down.
Okay, I'm going to ask you a series of questions. Get to the mic here, sorry. I'm going to ask you a series of questions to try to get us there as quickly as we can. You testified on direct, and is it still your testimony that you reside at 1202 Laurley Lane?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Is it true you own another home with your husband?
Yes, that's true, but-
Yes, that's true, but this is not, that's his house, and I'm not living with him. My children lives with him, but I don't live there. This is my residency where I live, 1202 Lyerly Lane.
Okay. And your driver's license says 1202 Lyerly Lane, correct?
That's correct. My driver's license is on this address.
And-
The property is on my address, and my revenue is on my address.
You and your husband by choice do not reside in the same house, correct?
Correct.
And if you weren't operating this daycare, you and your husband would not reside at the same house, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. You go to that house to visit your children.
That's correct. I need to support them. I can't leave them just for one parent to raise them. I am a good mother, and I'm trying to raise and support myself and support them as much as I can.
And on occasion, do you have to get up extra early to go provide one or more children of yours transportation to school before you open the Busy Bee?
That's correct.
Now, like many of us, at the close of a business day and we leave our office, is it true that you leave the house shortly after the children have left?
I'd like to explain. That may confuse my neighbors, but this is all false statement. I have it here. Just one minute, please. Thank you. Why I am not here in the evening? I have a heavy schedule every day. After I close my preschool, I must constantly keep my credential and license up to date by attending evening continued education workshop. I am also working in the healthcare facility part-time on weekends and occasionally weekdays as needed. They call me all the time, but not all the times can go because I'm booked up with the other schedule. Also, I have a daughter in high school who relies on my providing, who relies on, for providing her transportation. She is involved in various honors society, after-school activities, and leadership group. I must also spend many hours training her for obtaining the driver's license. Therefore, I cannot return until late hours, often past bedtime. There is why it may cause confusion for my neighbors. Why they see arriving in the morning, I have to wake up early morning and give my daughter a ride to school, or sometimes buy necessary groceries for my daycare. Sometime my parents, my kids, my husband or my parents, my kids' father goes for business trips. I can't leave my daughter alone in that house. I have to be for her there. I have very, very hard life. I have, I'm working hard to support myself and my two children. My other son is in the high school and needs a lot of support financially as well.
Okay, let me, I'm sorry. I'll let you finish.
Most of my neighbors do not know me or know where my house is. Many of them were briefed by Ms. Sue Koo and her tireless campaign against me.
Excuse me. David, make sure she doesn't engage in hearsay testimony, please.
Just, to the best of your knowledge, do the parents dropping off children and picking up children at the Busy Bee park on the street or in the driveway?
They always park on my driveway. They're not parking on the street.
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Okay.
But Bennett.
Any other witnesses?
I do, real quickly, and I'm going to try to call them up in a group, if that's all right, because we have parents here who are the current customers, whose children are currently enrolled at Busy Bee. And so I'd like to ask if both husband and wife are here, if just one of them would step up of the current enrollment.
What does it have to do with rebuttal?
The parking aspect, they're trying to allege that the daycare is causing, you know, traffic on the cars to be parked on the, on the street. Okay, let's state your-
Hey, I'm Renee Harris. I reside at 2515 Tofeta Trace in Apex, and my husband is at home with the children and the rest, he would be here, so my best friend attends a daycare with me, so we figured.
Hi, I'm Kelly Cantwell, and my son goes to see Ms. Bennett daily. He actually provided the pictures to us of all the parking pictures that somebody submitted, and particularly the one that shows the school bus. Those two cars are none of the people that actually attend the daycare. We always park in the driveway, so, I mean, these pictures are, these two people that are parked here are not either of our cars or any of the cars that actually attend, so just wanted to make you aware of that.
Another thing that everybody's, the concerns were for 12 families. That's not what Bennett is doing this for. There's five kids there right now, but there's four families. We all have multiple children. My sister up there just had a baby, another family had a baby. I'm going to have another, she's going to have another. She's growing this daycare for the same families that are keeping her in business who keep having kids. So there are only four cars that come and go every day. This isn't, there will not be 12 cars on Lyerly Lane, and the bus has never been there during drop-off or pickup, and we would never, we all have children, we would never park in the way of other people.
And I think that's the biggest point here. The whole reason that she's doing this is for us. She knows that, you know, we're having children, and we have requested her to do this. We would love to send our other children to her because she is such a loving and caring provider that we don't want to send our kids anywhere else. We want her to be the one who takes care of them.
I mean, we have military families, we have doctors, we have dentists, we have nurses, we have CPAs. We're just trying to make our living as well. And having Bennett there makes it that much easier. And as far as her residing there, if Bennett was not sleeping there on the snow days that we've had, 18 this year, when Wake County's closed and all my kids are home, I can still bring the baby because Bennett is there. She's slept there, and she's there when, first thing in the morning. So we don't have to follow the silly delay as bigger daycares would do.
So she provides an absolutely essential service to all of us.
I'll jump into closing, really, if that's all right, at this time. I mean, the expert testimony that you've heard, we have presented experts to cover all the criteria. You've heard the allegations that Bennett does not reside at the property. She has rebutted those as best as anyone can. I don't know how I would prove I live where I live, other than what she has said. It may not be the type of living arrangement that we're accustomed to, but it's what works for Bennett and her family, and that's her circumstance. And I think she's the best person testifies to that. You've heard the testimony of Frank Price, traffic engineer with 50 years' experience. He's not going to stand up there and put his 50-year reputation at risk and say that six cars can park in the driveway if he doesn't believe they can. Tim Clark, 30-plus years as a planner, or 20-plus years, I may have misspoke, has addressed the bulk of the criteria. And there is no proposal to change anything about the house, and so I don't see how adding the number of children who can be served in the house changes the character of the structure or of the community. And so I feel like that the only competent, credible evidence that you all have heard tonight provides sufficient evidence for you to make the findings necessary to grant this special use permit. And accordingly, we respectfully request that you do so. We're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. This time I'll ask town staff if they have any additional testimony.
We'd just like to speak to the question about the lot size. And the land development ordinance was amended a few years ago to set that 12,000 square foot minimum lot size. There was a document that was prepared by a member of our staff that was a user's guide that had a typographical error on it that stated 15,000 square feet is the minimum lot size. When the citizen contacted me with that information and we realized there was a discrepancy, that was updated last week. So that was a recent correction. There was no change to the LDO. It is a requirement for a 12,000 square foot minimum lot size.
Okay, anything else?
Not unless you have any questions.
Okay. This time I'll invite cross-exam, cross-examination or rebuttal of that testimony by the town Testimony by the town staff, okay. Now we'll ask anyone who has been sworn in that has objections to the incompetent evidence or testimony. Please come to the microphone. We're only speaking about the incompetence, incompetent evidence or testimony. No other issues.
Hi, I'm Karen Michener. I just want to state that I have 20 signatures from the neighbors that we had a letter go around as to denying this special use permit to increase the daycare. And I know it's not admissible, but I just want you to know, it was the residents on Lyerly Lane as well as people that were on Ascom Ivy, and they all are asking for this not to pass. We're asking for this special use permit to be denied. Thank you.
Any objections? Thank you.
I would just like to state a formal objection to any testimony that was provided by the opposition as to issues of transportation and parking and impacts that the proposed use would have on those facilities. And just one quick, it's unfortunate that some folks don't support this, but there is not a criteria that says it's popular. And so I would, again, renew our respectful request that you grant this special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Does either party have evidence that has been presented tonight that warrants a continuance of this hearing? That's the only question I'm adding. Any reason to continue the hearing? Not, we'll continue on and begin deliberative phase of the hearing and open it up to council members for comments or questions.
Do you have any questions?
I have some questions.
I can-
Mr. York.
Couple of questions. One is just to make sure I got some numbers right. The parking, maybe this is for Mrs. Grandin. The, what does our ordinance say as far as the number of parking spaces, again, for a large daycare? I believe it was four.
Four off-street parking spaces. If there is an employee who is not a resident of the home, there needs to be one additional space.
Okay. And that's, what would be the requirement for, just as comparison for the small daycare right now?
One moment, I'll get that.
Just trying to think of the difference. And I, well, if you can get that quickly, we'll wait.
Did you have another question while I was looking for it? Go ahead.
Looks like a very large book, so it could take a while. Answer questions. Yeah. No, just the question, I know there, you know, whether the applicant resides there or doesn't reside there, I mean, we have two totally different things going on here, but the applicant says she does reside there. But I am curious if there is a definition of reside. So that might be a question, I don't know, for Mr. Silverstein or whatnot, but do you have your-
It is three spaces for a small daycare home and one additional space if there is an employee who is not a resident of the home.
Okay, so it's a small difference between the small and the large, in my opinion. Thank you for that. And is there a definition of reside? I'm getting a signal from the town attorney that there's not. Reside would mean that it would be the principal residence. One thing that I would also like to point out with regard to this issue of residency, the burden is on the applicant to produce competent, substantial, and material evidence that all of the factors exist. If the applicant does that, then the burden shifts to the opposition to provide clear, competent, and substantial evidence that the facts do not exist. One thing that you have to be aware of, and there's a case that actually is out of Garner, it's called the Sun Suites case, you cannot consider speculative testimony. So if someone says everyone knows that, you really can't consider that because that's speculation. So you really, you do have to be careful that when testimony is presented, that it is, it is personal observation and not speculation. My only other comment now, maybe have a few later, but my only other comment is the, there are five children now with just four families involved, so there's a fewer number of cars. But if we increases 12, doesn't mean that's always going to be the case, I guess. I suppose there could be more, more cars, more families, more traffic. That was the only thing that just really, really struck me. Well, I'll put some more questions together, but why don't we go on to the next?
Just a question with regards to special use permit. The special use permit, as I understand it, goes with this lot. Is that correct? With, or with the applicant?
With the operator.
With the operator. So if another operator would move in, that special use-
It goes, it goes with this applicant, with this individual applicant and this operation. It doesn't run with the lands.
So there was a comment before by someone who came up and said it used, there were other people who ran daycares, and this special use would just, would only continue with this applicant, should, this operator, should they leave, that special use would no longer apply?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
So speaking of residents, Mr. Silverstein, and proof of that, we've had someone say they live there and that their driver's license, I mean, can we ask for proof? I mean, is that reasonable thing to do?
It is.
Or do we just take, because I would ask for that. I would ask to see the driver's license, if that's a reasonable thing to do.
Certainly, I think you-
That seems like, that seems evidentiary to me.
You have certain, that's, that's a very legitimate request.
Okay. And while that's happening, can I ask, may I ask a parking question? And that is, a great deal is, emphasis has been placed on the fact that this home has a garage. And I would ask, is that garage housed the owner's car? Is that garage able to be parked in? Because we all know that often garages are not. So I'd like the answer to that question. And I would also just agree with Mr. Yurha that even though there are five families, four families at present, that what we're agreeing to is what could happen in the future. And when those children age out, there's the potential for 12 children from different families, and there are only, there's only requirement for five, if you have an employee, parking spaces. And I'm, so that's a consideration. And then my other thought that I suppose the daycare operator or their attorney could answer is, how does one pull in and drop off their child, and someone else pull in and drop off their child, and people get out if there's no on-street parking? It just seems like an operational question, if that's an okay question to ask. So.
It is.
Okay.
So we're-
Thank you.
Waiting on the attorney.
We just have one photocopy, we did not.
That's fine.
And the question about the parking, did you hear that question?
I apologize, I did not.
I asked if someone, if the garage was actually able to be parked in, if that's where the operator's car is. Because that would count, you're counting that as saying that's potential for parking, and I was curious as to whether it truly was potential for parking.
I would need to call Bennett. It's my understanding that she parks in that garage, but I would need to call her down to testify specifically to that, but-
But that is, that is my understanding, she parks in the garage. Do you park in the garage?
Right. I always park only in my garage.
Is that okay?
You have one more question?
Actually, I had a procedural question about, and I think this may be the daycare operator's expertise. So, so let me start by saying, what are your hours of operation? When do you start admitting children in the morning? And when's the last child picked up in the afternoon?
My first child usually arrived around eight, eight o'clock, and by 5:30, everybody's gone.
And how do you manage if all four families show up at the same time, how people are able to get in and out without blocking each other in? Like the first one in-
No. I have, I have my assigned signature at what time they arrive. I can show you. It's always a few minutes apart. Sometimes-
So they have a signed arrival time?
Yes, sometimes one or two parents come noon time earlier. So many times, parents, they don't bring their kids as well.
Okay, so they're not all coming at the same time. And what age children do you care for?
Right now, I have five children, preschool.
Right, and so their ages what to what? It sounds like-
From zero to, to five.
To five years old.
And occasionally I have three children after school.
That was going to be, yeah. So there's after-school care, is there any overnight care?
Yeah, when the school is closed, you know? Teacher work, occasionally I have, you know, the school age.
Sure, and is there any after, is there any overnight care?
Uh, no, I have only one shift right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Comments?
A lot of the questions I was going to ask have already been asked. You know, Mr. Yurha touched on the parking, I guess. I look at the driveway and I'm kind of pretty good at moving cars around. I could fit eight in there, but- The law only requires four, so whether it can hold four, six, eight, or whatever, as long as it holds four plus one, that's all the law requires it to do. So the residency, after hearing some of the testimony, was somewhat of a concern, but at the end of the day, I believe the applicant has addressed that. Driver's license has the address, she's registered to vote at that address. It's in her name. The town typically doesn't go out and sit across the street and, you know, spy on it for a week, make sure. Given some of the stories we've heard, I can understand how some of the residents may not see her at the home. But I just got to say, of six years I've been on this council, I hate daycare cases more than anything. They pit neighbor against neighbor, and they just cause so much angst and animosity, and it is so unfortunate. Regarding the drop-off and pickup stuff, I mean, we've, we've used home daycare over the years for all of our kids, and we've had some that have been limited to five and some that could hold more than that. And never had a problem getting in and out of the parking and the garage. And one of them's on Walnut Street, and so a lot of traffic coming by, four lanes. It's never been an issue, it's not a concern. Even if the car is parking on the road, where parents dropping off kids, car's only there 10, 15 minutes, but that's a problem that can be fixed. You tell the parents not to park in the darned street anymore. So I feel that's easily fixed. I believe it meets all the criteria of the seven tests. You know, I'd go through them one by one, but I, I just don't see a reason not to support it based on what we are legally allowed to consider. So those are my comments.
And if we're running out of comments, Ms. Grannan can lead us through motions at this time.
And I just wanted to add a point of clarification. Well, if granted, it would not run with land. It could be transferred to a successor in interest. If the applicant were to transfer her license for busy B to, you know, a family member who took over the business and lived in the home, and something that you may wish to consider, because it did appear that it was a concern, is you could suggest a condition, if you were inclined to approve this, you could suggest a condition that would limit it to the current applicant.
May I ask Ms. Grannan a question? Have we, in my limited experience, have we done that before? Is that a common thing to do with the special use permit? Is to limit, is to set or request or suggest a condition like that for the applicant?
It has-
Ms. Adcock, if I can interrupt, it has been done in other jurisdictions.
Okay. So there is precedent for that? I was curious.
Some do it routinely.
Okay.
Other questions, comments?
I guess the only comment is, it almost feels like we're trying to force-fit the arguments to comply with the, the seven tests. It's an established area. Streets are narrow. I respect the citizens that said the cars on the street weren't necessarily involved with the daycare, but those are pretty frightening pictures when you, when you look at them with the buses trying to get through there. And Don, I agree with you, these are probably the most difficult cases because, you know, I'm not sure what the demographics is of the area right now, but you could see it turning where there'd be a lot younger families and maybe the need for the, the daycare is there. But, you know, I'm going through them right now, I'm withholding judgment for the next few minutes, but I, it just feels way too big and disproportionate for, for this to be considered for a larger, you know, a larger use. That's just my observations.
May I ask, may I ask a question about criteria five? It asks, is the proposed use or development of land in harmony with scale, bulk, coverage, density and character of the area? Is, is there any guidance on whether a smaller daycare is more in harmony with a neighborhood and development than a daycare that accepts seven more children? Because to me, the issue is, there's a daycare there. So it's an order of magnitude, but it's already a day, different, you know, I would look at this a little differently if it was the establishment of a daycare in character with the neighborhood as opposed to a daycare that's going to have more children but essentially serve the same function. To me, that seems like a substantial difference.
And I, I guess that's, you know, point well taken, but five children versus 12 children in an older, established neighborhood in a small home, I mean, it, it's, you'd make the argument that you'd want some improvements to the house to accommodate that larger group.
That's a great question, but my question, isn't that a state licensing issue and not a town of care issue? I'm looking at Mr. Silverstein.
The number of, of children, whether the residence meets those requirements? Yes.
That's a state licensing issue and not an issue of-
Correct, and also something that the applicant would be willing to accept is a condition to limit the number of children to 10. And that is something, if you were inclined to approve this, that they would be willing to accept as a condition tied to the special use.
So two conditions so far, 10 children and tying the special use to this applicant versus a successor. Is that correct?
Correct.
Two kids, really a deal breaker?
I didn't say it was, I was simply restating what was offered.
Do they have the right to offer a condition that limits the number of families?
That would be difficult to, I would think that that would be difficult to regulate.
Okay, I was just asking. Just asking, because there'd be fewer cars coming into the parking.
But in terms of, you know, what to consider with conditions, that would be hard to monitor over the years.
Yeah, I see that.
Other questions, comments? Are we ready for Ms. Grannan to lead us through motions?
I think so.
And because there is no site plan associated with this request and it is just the special use, you could make a motion to approve the special use with those conditions as, as discussed.
And this is a majority vote?
Correct.
Well then, may I ask a question about the condition about 10 children? I, I have to reflect on what Mr. France said is, you know, the state says a large family daycare can be up to 12 children. They're the licensing agency and it meets those requirements. It seems almost capricious to say, no, it should be 10, when we're not the licensing agency. And it's like throwing a dart. I appreciate the applicant's willingness-
They would, they would not, they would not issue the license unless they saw the record of the special use from the town. So the, the state would get, would ask to see a copy of the special use permit?
Correct, but if we didn't have a condition on the number, they would likely get a, get their license based on the, up to 12 children is just my point. I feel like we're trying to second guess what the state says is an appropriate number of children for a large family daycare. And, you know, I'm never in favor of just throwing a dart at something and say, well, that sounds good. Yeah, I'm just very hesitant to do that.
And Mr. Silverstein can speak to this as well, but you're entitled to put conditions on the special use grant that are reasonably related to the impacts of the use. So if you felt that, and the difference between 10 and 12 children, there might be a difference in impacts, and that would be a rational basis for putting 10 child limit on it.
And what's the proof we have of the impact? I mean, I guess that's what I'm asking. I'm not speaking for or against, I'm just trying to gather information to help me make up my mind. I mean, I don't know that we have any evidence that says, you know, the impact, 12 children versus 10 impacts the number of cars in the driveway because there are multiple, I mean, there are fewer families involved. I don't know. I mean, it's-
I guess my question is, if the applicant volunteers as a sign of good faith to address the emotional concerns of the neighborhood, who are we to judge?
No, I, I think there-
You know, if somebody wants to step up and say, 10, you know, maybe it doesn't make a difference, but I personally think it makes a significant difference.
I think it certainly makes a psychological difference.
Ms. Grannan? So we're ready for a motion? Is there a motion?
Don't all speak at once.
For the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the request for a special, special use permit as the proposed expansion to the existing use meets all of the approval criteria set forth in Section 3.8.3. This approval shall include the following conditions. That first, the resolution and permit approved in this special use application shall be recorded with the Wake County Register of Deeds upon the expiration of the appeal period per Section 3.8.4E of the LDO. The original recorded resolution and permit shall be returned to the Planning Department when received from the Register of Deeds. The approval of this special use is conditioned on the subsequent approval of a development plan in accordance with LDO Section 3.8.1b2 and as required under LDO Section 3.9. And three, that the operator shall obtain all required permits and licenses from the Town of Cary. Four, that this special use permit will be granted to this operator and non-transferable to another. Am I wording that correctly?
That, that would work.
Okay. I'm going to stop there.
So you're leaving out the 10?
I, I really, really appreciate the effort to compromise-
You need a second, Mr. France, before you can speak to your motion.
Well, I was, I was answering his question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second discussion.
I really appreciate the applicant's willingness to reduce the number of children by two. I, I really feel that that's a good faith effort on their part. At the end of the day, I just don't think it makes a hill of beans. Two extra cars in the morning, two extra cars maybe in the afternoon, maybe a couple kids playing, having a good time in the backyard. I, I just don't see that it makes that big a difference. I really don't. And I would hate for a family that, you know, maybe has another child to not be able to have her keep that child because, nope, I'm at 10. And so that's, that's just my thoughts. I mean, you know, I'm, hell, I'm a parent of six kids. I could have taken half of them.
I wondered if Ms. Bush, who gave the second, wanted to speak next. If not, I will.
I would thank you, Ms. Adcock. As a mother who had a child in a home daycare, I can appreciate the comments that were made on both sides of the aisle, and I absolutely agree with you that this is, in some cases, a no-win situation for some of the families that live around here, and I absolutely appreciate that they came and, and spoke, I, I truly believe from the heart, at this point, we're making a decision based on the information and the evidence that's brought before us in accordance with the law. And so we're also in a difficult spot as well. But I, having put my children through at-home daycare, I think it's one of the best places to have a child, and I absolutely appreciate the applicant, you know, coming before because this is not a cheap thing to do in order to help the families that I can tell she so very much loves. So it's a very difficult decision for all of us, but we do appreciate the, the work effort. So thank you for letting me say that.
Mr. Silverstein, I think I know the answer to the question I'm going to ask, but I'm going to ask it anyway just because it's a quasi-judicial hearing. If we deny this motion, is there an opportunity to do another motion with the addition of the second condition that the applicant gave? Or are we denying it, period, and it's done?
No, you could have, you could have an additional motion.
Other questions?
I'm going to support Mr. France's motion because I feel that the difference between 10 and 12 is an emotional decision and not a factual one. And I do think the applicant has met the conditions. And I also want to say that I regret that she had to divulge so much personal information about herself, which was none of our business, and that that was a very forthcoming of her to do that and not, and not necessary.
Other comments? Mr. Yurha?
Although my gut feel tells me that if the possibility exists where we're going to have 10 or 12 separate families here with 10 or 12 cars, there's got to be a logistics problem with, with parking. I mean, it tells me that there almost has to be. Our requirement still is that we need four spaces. And I think that's what the applicant has to meet, and I'm confident that four parking places plus one can be met, looking at the pictures, looking, listening to the evidence that's been provided. And I think that's what I have to go by. I believe that test has been met as, along with the other ones. Gut feel aside, that there could be a problem. The requirement is, is four plus one. So I support the motion as well.
Okay, other comments?
Well, I would prefer to see an additional condition regarding 10 children versus 12. I think it would mitigate the impact that the neighbors are worried about, and I think it would be a good faith effort.
Anything else?
I think Jennifer echoed, echoed my point, and like you said, we can debate till the end of time about our opinion on the impact and what's emotional and not. I think one of the problems with the law and how narrow it is, is it doesn't really look at the community at large and the condition of the community at large and, and the things that are going on impacting those neighbors. I guess those are, you know, I guess I have to grudgingly accept some of the expert comments, I just don't agree with them.
Okay. And my, my issue is the condition of 10 as well. That's what I would like to see, and I think it will have an impact. So that's where I'm, so unless there are any other comments, all in favor of the motion, please say aye and show your hand, please.
Aye.
Those opposed? No. Motion carries four to three. Additional motions necessary. Okay? Is everything in order?
It would be appropriate to close the-
Right, that's what I was going to do next, and make sure everything's in order. Everything's in order, okay? So at this time, I'll close the public hearing, and before we move on to our next quasi-judicial hearing, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Does not have any fundage on public rights away. Weston Parkway, which the park is accessed off of, is identified as a major thoroughfare by the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. And it's also in close proximity to Norwell Boulevard, which is a minor thoroughfare identified in the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. The site is located in close proximity to a future C-Trans route. There is currently no funding to expand that route. However, it is anticipated for expansion in the short term, maybe three to five years. An existing C-Trans route runs along Norwell Boulevard and then heads east on Weston Parkway toward Harrison Avenue. There's a stream buffer identified that runs along the eastern property boundary. The stream buffer is shown on the site plans and does not impact development as proposed. The property is identified for two different land use designations within the land use plan. The majority is identified for office institutional uses. And the eastern end of the property in the vicinity of the stream buffer is identified for parks and open space. Property is located in Pod O and I six of the Weston PDD. It is identified for most office uses. This is the existing conditions as it sits today. You can see the four buildings to the west that exist in the Center Green Park at Weston Development. The property has been cleared. There are small portions of parking that have been built to support the other buildings in the vicinity and will be expanded with this plan. This is just a photo of the existing. You can see the woods as it falls off toward the stream buffer, back towards Bexley at Weston and other properties in the Weston PDD. This plan is a little unusual in that it's been approved several times over the past decade. Weston is trying to keep it alive and in an approved state so they can move forward in a shorter timeframe when they have a prospective tenant. The proposal is for up to, and I say up to because this plan provides a little more flexibility than your average site plan. It is either for a four or five-story building. They're not sure based on their tenant needs which size it'll be. It also provides a majority of surface parking if it's a four-story structure. However, if it's a five-story structure or the tenant needs demand additional parking, there is space reserved and plans approved for a structured parking facility outlined here over the existing surface in red. Stormwater and everything else is handled through the overall development, as is access. And the architectural for the building, this is the four-story version. It shows the artist's concept, architect's concept for the architecture. The five-story building looks very similar, just a story taller. Because of the timing and circumstances surrounding this plan, it is subject to the former Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance for Roads. So the town, as part of a condition for the extension of one of the earlier extensions of the plan, did have a traffic impact analysis performed. It did identify impacts to three intersections, which we'll go over in detail. The first you may be familiar with is North Harrison Avenue and Weston Parkway. The improvements identified here are consistent with the improvements you've seen over the several cases recently. Extension of a third through lane southbound on North Harrison Avenue through the intersection, and then widening to accommodate an additional exclusive right turn lane to make up for the loss as converting to a through lane. The applicant, oh, lost my place. Applicant has requested that Town Council approve a waiver of these improvements. Council has seen this before in regards to the geometry of the intersection, the right-of-way concerns, impacts, the streetscapes, and the aesthetics. Second intersection identified in the TIA is Weston Parkway and Center Green Way. The only improvement identified at that intersection is signalization of the intersection. And you may remember with the Weston Lakefront offices being developed directly across the street, that improvement has already been committed to by that developer and it's the same developer, Highwoods Properties. So that will be done. And then the third intersection is Cary Parkway and Norwell Boulevard, just south of North Cary Park. The TIA identified a need for signalization at that intersection, at the ultimate build-out. What the applicant has offered is, they've committed to a letter of credit for the cost of signalization with a warrant analysis being done, or signal warrant analysis being done at the time of substantial occupancy. Staff is concerned about some of the wording in that offering by the applicant, what constitutes substantial occupancy and the amount of the letter of credit. So we've proposed additional, or an alternate condition, which is in your staff report, that adds some specificity to the amount of the payment in the letter of credit and the timing for that warrant analysis to be done, and then timing for that letter of credit to be released back to the developer if the warrants aren't met at that time. That language is consistent with other improvements where warrant analysis have been a concern whether or not they meet warrants. So that language is consistent with other approvals. That concludes staff's initial presentation. We will be available for questions during the deliberative phase or any other phase you have. Thank you.
Thank you. This time we'll call on the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group here on behalf of the applicant, Highwoods Realty Limited Partnership. As I do with most of these cases, I will commit to being as brief as possible, recognizing that it is an evidentiary proceeding. There are requirements of the ordinance that we have to submit evidence to show that we satisfy. Kevin's done a good job of outlining the basis of this case. Before we get started, I want to introduce our team here with me on behalf of Highwoods. There are Mr. Skip Hill and Mr. Randy Robertson, and they're available to answer questions related to Highwoods' ownership of this property as well as the remainder of Center Green. Also with me is Mr. Dale Worenko. He's the engineer with Kimley Horn and, excuse me, with Withers and Ravenel, who's been providing engineering associated with this plan. And finally, Mr. Richard Adams with Kimley Horn and Associates, who's the traffic engineer for this proposal, and will be testifying as to the traffic specifically with respect to the waiver request that is before you tonight. And before I hand it off to the experts to do their thing, I do want to make mention of the fact that this is a little bit unusual because we're here on a plan that is subject to the old APF. And the way that ordinance works, and I think Kevin has done a very good job of indicating why we're here, the way that ordinance works is because we're subject to the old APF, we have to submit a traffic study as was done with the old APF. And if there are improvements that are recommended as part of that that we don't believe should be applied to this project, then we have to come to you all to request a waiver, not dissimilar to what is done in other cases with respect to various other modifications of the ordinances, but recognizing that there are different criteria applicable to how that waiver is granted. And those criteria are contained in the ordinance and the testimony you all will receive from Richard Adams and the various members of the team will be tailored to those requirements. So with that, I will call our first witness, Mr. Dale Worenko with Withers and Ravenel.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. My name is Dale Worenko. I reside at 80 Shadocks Drive in New Hill, and I'm the lead project engineer for Center Green Park at Weston Development. I'm a registered North Carolina professional engineer, number 26495, with an associate's in engineering degree from Vermont Technical College. I currently work as a civil engineer and project manager for Withers and Ravenel and have over 20 years of design experience on a variety of residential, commercial, and industrial land development projects. The improvements contemplated by this site plan consist of up to 162,500 square feet of office, along with associated parking facilities, including a parking deck. As shown on the original site plan, as Kevin had shown, Building Three can either be developed as a four-story, 132,100-square-foot office building with 586 surface parking spaces, or as a five-story, 165,200-square-foot office building with 569 surface parking spaces and 113 parking spaces and a parking deck. As indicated on the proposed plan and other materials submitted, the improvements have been designed in compliance with the requirements of the town's land development ordinance, including the development and design standards of Chapter Seven and Eight, as well as the dedication and improvements provisions of Chapter Eight. Summarize the findings. Building Three is part of Center Green Park at Weston, an office park owned and developed by Highwoods Properties, which will, at full development, include five office buildings and a parking deck. Accordingly, there are no residential uses on the subject property. Moreover, the subject property is located within the Weston Plan Development District. Although a handful of properties within the Weston PDD have been developed for other uses, the vast majority of properties in this area have been developed for office and institutional uses. Further, the subject property includes sufficient buffering from adjacent properties. Landscape buffers are included along the western and southern boundaries of the property, which abut the residential uses. With respect to the western boundary, there are significant environmentally sensitive areas immediately adjacent to the site which served to further buffer Building Three from the residences in the vicinity. The developer submits that the proposed plan adequately protects other property and residential uses on the subject property from the potential adverse effects of the proposed development. As indicated, Building Three is part of an office park that, when completed, will include five office buildings. Further, the development of the property for this additional office building furthers the development of properties in this area, which have developed for primary office uses. As a result, the development of the property to include Building Three will be in harmony with the development of nearby properties. The plan includes sufficient sidewalks from the parking areas to entrances to Building Three to ensure no conflicts between vehicles and pedestrians. The plan includes two public access points. The primary entrance to Center Green via Center Green Way is being signalized as part of the MetLife office development. With the signalization of this intersection, this plan provides safe ingress and egress for emergency services to the site. And I'm available to answer any questions further if you need to.
Thank you.
At this time, Mr. Mayor, we'll call Mr. Richard Adams to testify.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. My name is Richard Adams with Kimley Horn and Associates. The address is 3001 Weston Parkway here in Cary. I am a traffic engineer assisting Highwoods with this project, and I have a bachelor in civil engineering, bachelor of science in civil engineering from North Carolina State, and a master of science in civil engineering from Georgia Tech, and a master of science and management from Georgia Tech as well. I'm a professional engineer in North and South Carolina, and I've been practicing traffic engineering and transportation planning for approximately 20 years. As was previously noted, a traffic impact analysis has been performed by the town, and the developer is complying with the following recommended improvements contained within that analysis. First one being providing a traffic signal at the intersection of Weston Parkway at Center Green Way. Again, as was mentioned previously, that's being installed as a part of the Weston Lakefront project. And also to provide a traffic signal at the intersection of Cary Parkway at Norwell Boulevard. And then again, as Mr. Hale specified, that would be studied to determine if the warrant is met. If so, the applicant is prepared to design and construct the signal. The applicant is also prepared to provide the letter of credit, exactly as the town has spelled out in their suggested wording. So they are comfortable with that as well. The one improvement that the applicant is here to discuss and is not prepared to install is the improvement recommended at Weston Parkway and Harrison Avenue. That specifically includes the following: converting the existing southbound right-turn lane to a through lane; extending the outside southbound receiving lane to provide 1,000 feet of full lane with appropriate taper and distance for merging; providing an exclusive southbound right-turn lane with appropriate taper beginning just south of the existing right-in, right-out driveway, in order to maintain the free-flow movement that exists today for the right-turn movement. And as indicated in my January 7, 2014 letter request for waiver, the applicant seeks relief from these improvements for the following reasons. First, relating to the right-of-way constraints that make the improvements not feasible. These constraints include that the improvements will require right-of-way, slow easements, or both from the Wells Fargo and Burger King properties. Slow easements may also be required from various properties to extend the southbound receiving lane. There are also constructability issues that make improvements not feasible. These issues include that retaining walls may be required to avoid impacting the circulation for the Burger King and Wells Fargo developments. The improvements would likely require removal of trees along the frontage of both of those sites. And the widening to construct a southbound right-turn lane in front of those sites would likely require the relocation of three major utility poles paralleling North Harrison Avenue. There are also traffic issues that make the improvements not feasible. The traffic issues include that the proposed improvements will have little to no practical usefulness from a traffic standpoint. Without extending the proposed receiving lane substantially farther, the additional through lane is expected to be grossly underutilized based on experience with similar improvements. The intersection also only marginally meets, even meets the requirements of the threshold for even being studied at this intersection. Specifically, the TIA that was commissioned by the town called out an 8% impact to one turning movement, that being the right-turn movement eastbound from Weston Parkway in the PM peak hour, and that this development has an 8% impact on that movement, and seven or more is the threshold to meet that. So this intersection was right on the border of even being warranted to be studied as part of this development. The Center Green office building also only has less than 2% impact to the volumes at this intersection overall. In the traffic impact analysis prepared for the Weston Lakefront development, as was previously pointed out, this intersection was analyzed and no improvements were required by the town. And again, in the traffic impact analysis prepared as part of the recent SaaS submittal, this intersection was also studied, and no improvements were required by the town for that development. And based upon the foregoing, it is my opinion that the waiver of these intersection improvements will not result in, number one, unsafe conditions for pedestrians and motorists, or a dangerous arrangement of pedestrian and vehicular ways; or, two, unsafe ingress and egress for emergency services to the site; or, three, traffic congestion impacts that reasonably expected to be generated by the project that will not be mitigated. With the improvements that are being made by others, the plan provides mitigation for traffic congestion impacts reasonably expected to be generated by the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, we have no further witnesses to call as part of our case in chief, but I would like the opportunity to close prior to our case closing.
Very good. Thank you. This time I'd invite other speakers who have been sworn in and wish to speak in support of the application to approach the podium, one at a time. Seeing no one will move on, and I would invite cross-examination of witnesses who testified in support of the request. Seeing no one, we'll keep moving. We'll open up the hearing to those who are opposed to the request. Anyone opposed? Okay. I'll call on the town staff or any additional testimony that wished to add.
We have nothing to add. Thank you.
Very good. Does either party believe there is new evidence to continue this public hearing? Seeing no. And this is your time to close. Moving right along.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group. I believe the testimony and evidence that's been submitted into the record of this proceeding supports a finding that this plan complies with the requirements of the ordinance for approval of the plan, along with the waiver of the traffic improvement that has been required as part of the traffic impact analysis. With respect to the waiver, I do want to note, and it's noted in the staff report, that the justifications that support the waiver in this case are very similar to the justifications that supported the other cases that have recently been approved by the town council. And because there has been no material change in the feasibility of making the improvements at Harrison and Weston Parkway, we believe that this case should be approved in a similar fashion. So with that, again, we respectfully request you all's approval of this case and are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move into the deliberative phase of the hearing, and if council members are ready for motions, please let me know, and we'll call on Mr. Hale, who can help us with that.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Question regarding the waiver at Harrison and Weston, I have no problem with. I mean, I think that's already built out to as big as we're going to go there, at least in my opinion. We didn't require it for Bass Pro. We're not requiring it for SaaS, so on and so forth. The developer across the street's doing the signal at Center Green, so, okay. I guess my question is, what's the big deal with the signal at Norwell and Cary Parkway? Why we're kind of hesitant to commit to that instead of maybe commit to when CO is issued or something like that?
I'll let Mr. Adams handle that question.
Thank you. And I'll answer it, and town staff may want to chime in as well. But basically, that intersection does not meet, does not fully meet the warrants that we would typically want to see to put in a signal. In other words, the volumes are not high enough for enough hours to warrant meeting it, putting in a signal.
Now or post-construction?
I'm sorry?
Now or post-construction?
Well, that's the question at hand, really. We don't know, of course, you know, exactly when the construction will happen and then what the volumes will be. And so that's why this language has been set up such that at CO, or I guess right before CO, the applicant will have to conduct a study to see if it's warranted at that time. And then 12 months later, after the building has been occupied, 12 months after that, then it will have to be studied again. And during that intervening time, they'll have to provide a letter of credit so that it would be built either by them or by the town using the letter of credit.
Okay, so, but if those two 12-month periods where we look at it, study it, and say it still doesn't meet warrants, does the letter of credit, the commitment, stay there forever? Or does that go away?
My understanding is that it goes away.
So then ultimately, the town of Cary would be on the hook for the signal at that point?
If it is warranted in the future.
Correct. And this came up, if you remember, with the Jones Farm property down at Kildare Farmer with the signal on Arthur Pierce. There were concerns about the town holding on to a letter of credit indefinitely. If this property's been developed and is occupied, and it's been a year, and it hasn't met signal warrant analysis, analyses to install that signal, then it would be hard to tie that improvement back to impacts caused by this development. So that's why that language was changed.
Okay. So just, I guess I'm just still trying to understand how the TIA shows we need a signal or recommend a signal, but doesn't meet warrants, so we're just going to keep looking at it.
It's right on the line for requiring or meeting warrants possibly, but I'll let Jerry speak more detail, Mr. Jensen from Engineering.
Good evening. The traffic study first looked at congestion and said in order to mitigate congestion, they needed a signal to help with the movements at that intersection. The second thing that our consultant did was look at signal warrants, and they didn't go through a very in-depth signal warrants, but they looked at the peak hour warrants. And it did meet the peak hour warrant for both the morning and the afternoon. However, there's eight other warrants that need to be satisfied or at least looked at in conjunction with this case to see whether a signal should be justified at that particular intersection. So alls we're saying in this particular case is, it does say in the traffic study it meets the peak hour warrants, but we need to go a little bit further and see if we truly meet maybe a four-hour warrant, a volume warrant, or an eight-hour volume warrant, or a number of accidents out there. So there's a lot more things to look at technically before we come out and say we would recommend a signal at this particular intersection. This just gives them, they're still on the hook for it, but in the event that we don't have enough signal warrants to justify to you that we put a signal there, then they would have their money returned to them.
Okay.
Can I ask a follow-on to that traffic one?
Mine actually was about that.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. So my question, my first question was to the applicant. So the language proposed by staff on page 10 of the staff report is acceptable to you?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And my other question is, what percentage of potential occupancy of this building would be anticipated at 12 months? Because if it's 10% full, that's one impact on the intersection. If it's 90% full, that's another.
Understood.
Because I'm wondering if 12 months is long enough. I'm wondering if we should extend the time perhaps, based on, and I know you can't predict the market with any degree of certainty, but maybe based on your extensive experience, you could give us an idea.
They're saying two years.
Yeah, but we don't know when it will go to occupancy.
Yeah. I mean, CO means the first person moves in, and they're the only one.
Right.
Good evening. Randy Robertson with Highwoods Properties. Ms. Adcock, to answer your question, we would not start that building as a speculative building at this time. It's not to say in the future that the building couldn't be built spec. However, typically, it takes a significant amount of pre-leasing, normally 50% or larger. But at the end of the 12-month period from the initial CO, I can't sit here tonight and testify exactly what that percentage would be, whether it would be 50 or 90 or what.
But it would be greater than 50, in your opinion?
Yeah, because it's going to take that threshold for us to get it through our investment committee to get it kicked off.
That's exactly what I was looking for. Thank you.
And I noticed, since we're on the whole traffic discussion, I noticed the TIA was dated September 2013. Did that traffic report include the, what are we calling it, the lakeside, the other large Highwood development across the way?
The actual timing for the study was actually, the application for the study occurred back in May, way before the lakeside project even was considered. So it does not show up in this particular study. What it does so, though, when the other projects that have been through quasi-judicial recently with you with the Weston Lakefront and the SaaS, both those did include the Center Green project in their background traffic. So it has, you know, projects already have been approved, have already looked at it as well. And they had similar improvements at the intersection with Harrison and Weston as well.
So is there an impact, if you were to do this study today, with, given that large lakeside property and the, you know, I don't know how many thousands of occupants, would that have an impact on this particular intersection? Would your findings be different?
I think the findings wouldn't be any different. They still, there's some improvement needed at Weston and Harrison. Southbound lane addition needs to be there. They're very similar. Like I say, when the SaaS that we just recently saw last month building, it included the Center Green project. It identified that it needed a southbound lane with the inclusion of the Center Green traffic and the Weston Lakefront traffic, you know, associated with that project as well. So they're very, they're almost identical in the recommendations.
I was actually speaking to the one that Mr. France brought up, which was the Cary Parkway in Norwell, because I didn't see that on either the others.
Actually, on the, yeah, on the SaaS, the SaaS traffic study was, it was not, that was not studied because it was too far away from an influence area. The Weston Lakefront, I believe it was studied, but I don't believe, I have to look at it, but I think there may have been, it had been very close to whether, I think it was level service D at that particular time. So it was very close. Also, I think in this particular study, their threshold or build-out year is immediate, and I think the Weston Lakefront was much longer period of time. So, but it does identify in here, though, that with this project, they would need it to mitigate traffic congestion. Again, like I say, we'd need to look at the signal warrants and see whether that would be justified.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Are we ready? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if we could just, I'd like to offer one clarifying point for Mr. Adams on our impact at that intersection, just for the benefit of the council to understand what the traffic being generated by this development has on this intersection.
Thank you, Jason. I did just want to point out, at the Cary Parkway and Norwell intersection, two things. One, and Mr. Jensen alluded to this as well, is that the congestion problem is really common when you have an unsignalized intersection. You end up with, at least conceptually, some long delays. They're really mostly related to right turns, and we frankly don't like to put in signals for right turn movements. So that's part of why we're, you know, everybody agrees we don't want to put the signal in now. We do want to look at it in the future, just to keep an eye on it at least to a certain point. And then as to what should the applicant's, you know, duty be here, the information I would add to that is the impact of Center Green, this particular Center Green building to that intersection is less than 1% traffic impact. It was included into the study because of its proximity to the building, not because of its percent impact. And so because of the regulations on, you know, adequate public facilities, they had to provide a recommendation for that intersection. to provide a recommendation for that intersection. And so that's why the signal came up. But it is, again, it's not warranted right now, so, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? We're ready to move to the motion phase.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Mr. Hales, do you have anything to add before we make the motion?
Just wanted to remind council that there's no minor modifications, so the approval criteria you're considering are slightly different for the first decision, which is the waiver to the improvements at Cary Park, Weston and North Harrison. Those approval criteria, instead of coming out of 319, come out of 320, 3.23. And basically, you're, you're considering whether or not the approval of the waiver will result in unsafe conditions for pedestrians or motorists, or dangerous arrangement of pedestrian and vehicular ways, unsafe ingress or egress for emergency services, and then the standard traffic congestion impacts that are not mitigated by the project. So that's the first decision, then there's a follow-up decision with the site plan.
Okay.
Ms. Robinson.
Okay. I make a motion, I make a motion to approve the waiver request for the reasons that were discussed. I move that we approve the waiver requested by the applicant as it meets all of the approval criteria of Section 3.23 of the LDO.
Second. There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Hales, do you want to say anything before we go on the site plan?
The next motion is your standard development plan approval criteria, so you're familiar with them. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Okay, Ms. Robinson.
All right, go ahead and read it, and I will also read the detailed condition here. Okay, I make a motion to approve the site plan for the reasons discussed. I move that we approve the proposed site plan with conditions as stated below, as it meets all of the approval criteria of Section 3.9.2I of the LDO. This approval is conditioned upon the following. One, the applicant must satisfactorily address any remaining Development Review Committee comments on the master plan set submitted for signature. And two, add the following language regarding the signalization of the Norwell Drive Cary Parkway intersection in the traffic mitigation summary. And this is what staff recommended is included. As soon as is warranted and approved by the Town of Cary in the North Carolina Department of Transportation, the owner shall construct and install a traffic signal per Cary standards at the intersection of Cary Parkway and Norwell Road, as recommended by the TIA on file with the Town of Cary dated September 2013. And in parentheses, it's 13-TAR-377. A full signal warrant analysis shall be provided by the developer or owner of the subject property prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy of the building. If this signal is not warranted, or if it is warranted but not yet installed at the time the certificate of occupancy is issued, then the developer or owner shall provide a comprehensive opinion of cost in the form of a report, including signal design and review fees prepared by a professional engineer. The developer or owner shall provide a financial guarantee of the, of construction in the form of cash or a letter of credit equal to 1.5 times the cost determined in this report before any certificate of occupancy is issued. Such financial guarantee shall be administered by the town in accordance with its standard practices and procedures for financial guarantees and shall remain in effect until used or released in accordance with this condition. A final signal warrant analysis shall be performed by the developer or owner of the subject property within 12 months of certificate of occupancy issuance. If a signal is not warranted at that time, then the financial guarantee shall be released by the town to the person or entity that posted the guarantee.
There's a motion?
Second.
And the second?
I have a quick comment. There's a typo in item number two on the third line. It says, "At the intersection of Cary Parkway and Norwell," there should be an R after, should be Norwell?
Yeah, we'll fix it.
Since we have it, yeah. So, just a.
Mr. France?
Question is said for, the signal would meet Cary standards. Are Cary standards now the black masked arms, or are we still wooden pole?
I believe they're metal masked arms. I don't believe they're black necessarily.
Okay, but metal, okay.
Anything else? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Silverstein, everything in order?
Yes, sir.
Anything additional from council?
Nope.
All closed the public hearing, and we'll move to our next quasi-judicial hearing. Thank you, Mr. Hales.
I wanted you to read it again.
Our final, excuse me.
What was that?
I wanted her to read it again.
Our final quasi-judicial public hearing is for Evans Farm Town Home Site Plan. An overview of the hearing procedures and detailed rules are attached to the printed agenda. All speakers who want to speak during this public hearing must be administered an oath by the town clerk's administrative assistant. We'll pause at a moment to allow those individuals who want to speak at the public hearing to approach the town clerk's administrative assistant and receive their oaths. While that is going on, I'll ask council members if they've had any site visits, ex parte communications, financial relationship, specialized knowledge, or close relationship to an affected person to disclose, starting on my left, Mr. Yerha.
I have none.
Mr. Bu, Ms. Bush?
I have none.
Mr. France?
None.
I've had none.
I have none, Ms. [inaudible].
I have none.
There are none, and now we'll wait for speakers to be sworn in.
Mr. Bush, you're trying to take my job as free, free?
Yes, ma'am.
I dub either, backup.
So serious, I was going to say, I didn't hear all that.
I was going to ask Randy if he lived there. Can you show me your ID?
You don't remember the Ivy Lane?
I remember vaguely. That is hilarious.
Neighbor started calling, this is the only, and what they're doing is, the construction crews are going out, and wherever they pick them up, and they, you know, most of them are illegal, and they pick them up at certain sites, and they're handing out the address.
Most of the patrons were like, construction workers?
Yeah, yeah, and there's mixed, and this lady, I mean, she was just clueless. She called, they're coming to my house late at night, they're saying, she said, I'm not sure what they were saying, but they weren't getting it here. They gave it to Patton, and I guess it was, something was in the police room or somewhere, and he picked it. No, it's just, you know, that's not their plan for walking the streets.
We've had disclosure from council members, and there was nothing to disclose. If there's anyone who has an objection to a council member participating in this hearing, I'd invite you to the podium at this time. Seeing no one, we'll proceed. Now I'll open the quasi-judicial public hearing and open it up to Mr. Hales, who will introduce the item.
Thank you. Next hearing is a request by MI Homes of Raleigh for development of 152 townhomes on approximately 17 acres located at the intersection of O'Kelly Chapel Road and Green Level Church Road. This request truly does not include any minor modification requests to development standards or other waivers. It is before council tonight, simply due to the number of units. It's over 100, so it has to, has to be before council for traffic mitigations. So as I mentioned before, the site is located at the intersection of O'Kelly Chapel Road and Green Level Church Road. It's bounded on the northeast by Austin Avenue, slightly north of, immediately north of Rosepine Drive, which is the northern boundary of the existing Evans Farm subdivision. O'Kelly Chapel Road and Green Level Church Road are both identified as major thoroughfares in the comprehensive transportation plan. There's multifamily and a daycare center under construction north of O'Kelly Chapel Road. To the west is the northern end of Horton's Creek subdivision and several non-residential parcels, parcels and an activity center at that intersection, which have yet to be developed under a site plan. The site is located along a future C-Trans route identified in our, our long-range plans, however, there are no intentions or no plans to develop there out any time in the foreseeable future. The Parks Recreation Cultural Resources Facilities Master Plan identifies a proposed street-side trail on the western or eastern side of Green Level Church Road. This plan, as proposed, does include the small section, it's a very, very short section of frontage they have in the southwestern corner of the site. Our GIS maps indicate there's a stream buffer located in the center of the proposed development site, however, field determination associated with the site plan has determined that the feature is not subject to buffer regulation, so that would, that no longer exists. Land use plan identifies this property and most of the properties in the vicinity for mixed use. Property is currently zoned residential 40. It's a little unusual to see townhomes developed under our 40, and that's because this property is also located in the Austin Regional Activity Center. It is on the far western edge of that center, and all the properties in there under the old ACCP zoning kept their base zoning. That's why it looks a little unusual. Property as it exists today has patches of woods. The center of the site was cleared and was used for stockpiling soil in preparation for development, or stockpiling soil from adjacent developments. This is a picture of the site as it exists today, and you can see the soil stockpiles. This is standing near the intersection of Green Level Church Road, looking across Rosepine Drive. You also notice on some of the aerial photos that Green Level Church Road still veered off and was not aligned with the Green Level Church Road north of O'Kelly Chapel Road. Since those aerial photos were taken in March of 2013, that road has been realigned by MI Homes, actually, as part of another project. And you can see, this is the former right-of-way. Just been, asphalt's been removed and it's been seeded for stabilization, then the new road is off to the left-hand side of the photo. This is the subdivision site plan. It includes a mix of front and rear-loaded townhouse units. In general, the units internal to the site and facing Rosepine Drive are the rear-loaded units. The outer perimeter are the front-loaded units. There's a small section of front-loaded units internal, just based on the way the road's laid out. It proposes an extension of both Volonia Loop and Strenjral Drive. It's designed so that there's additional open space width along Strenjral Drive to create the feeling of a linear park. There are two community gathering spaces shown here in green. One contains public art, the one farther to the north, the intersection of Strenjral and Volonia, and the other one's just a small seating area lawn. On-street parking is envisioned by the Austin plan in this area and is being used to meet visitor parking requirements. Stormwater is being handled through the existing stormwater pond in Evans Farm subdivision. This is a artist rendition concept for the treatment along Strenjral Drive. You can see the wider front setbacks for the units fronting on that north-south road, the on-street parking and the small park-like area with the public art at the intersection. The applicant had a traffic impact analysis performed by Kimble Horn and Associates in support of their application. I'll briefly go through their recommendations. Improvements at O'Kelly Chapel Road and Austin Avenue involved turn lanes on O'Kelly Chapel Road. They, they proposed extending the eastbound left-turn lane to provide additional storage and constructing eastbound right-turn lane, and then to re-strike the exclusive westbound right-turn lane to a shared-through right. Looking at this aerial photo, you may be scratching your head because none of those lanes which they're extending exist, but they are shown as improvements on other site plans in the area, as well as some of those improvements have already been made. You just don't see them through the age of the photo. O'Kelly Chapel Road and Green Level Church Road. Improvements here involve extending the westbound left-turn lane to provide additional storage and constructing an exclusive westbound right-turn lane on O'Kelly Chapel. Intersection improvements with the new extension of Strenjral Drive basically are an exclusive eastbound right-turn lane into the site along O'Kelly Chapel Road. Just kind of summarize what's going on in the area, because there's a lot of development going on right now. That's why some of the road improvements sound a little funny based on the photos. Basically, there's a requirement to widen O'Kelly Chapel Road from two lanes to four lanes from NC 55 west 1,200 feet toward Green Level Church Road. That improvement was identified with the Parkside Town Commons Plan you guys saw several months ago and has been completed. Intersection reconfiguration of O'Kelly Chapel Road, there was a lot of information about that in the staff report involving all the leanage. That's a very large intersection in its ultimate condition. Those improvements were also identified with the Parkside Town Commons Plan and have been made or are completed at this point. There are a couple of improvements identified at Austin Avenue and O'Kelly Chapel Road that are associated with the All-Stars Children's Academy Development, which is in the northeastern quadrant of that intersection. One of those is an exclusive southbound left-turn lane on Austin, turning onto O'Kelly Chapel. And then the other one is constructing an exclusive eastbound left-turn on O'Kelly at Austin, and exclusive westbound left and right-turn lanes at O'Kelly. And those are the lanes we talked about earlier that are being extended as part of this development. So there may be some opportunities for some cost sharing between those two developers. And the only other thing I'll mention is, there's a requirement that signalization occur at Green Level Church Road or O'Kelly Chapel Road, and it's reconfigured state and MI Homes of Raleigh, as I mentioned earlier, as part of their reconfiguration of that road alignment. They're in the process of, the signal has been designed and are in the process of going through that with, reviewing that with NC DOT, and they're expecting a spring 2014 installation of that signal. That concludes staff's presentation at this time, and we'll be available, excuse me, we'll be available for questions during deliberation.
I feel your pain.
I will take a moment to go over the motions before you make them, because there's a condition of approval we need to add in regards to some right-of-way. They're abandoning the right-of-way dedication, as I mentioned before, for Green Level Church. That's in process, so that parcel doesn't exist, so they can't annex it yet, but it will need to be annexed. So we want to add a condition to make sure that within 60 days of that conclusion, that they get annexation petition comes in. So we'll talk about that later. Thanks.
Okay, very good. This time, we'll call on the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Preemptively drank water, so I don't get choked up like Kevin did over the plan. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jason Barron here on behalf of the applicant in this case, MI Homes of Raleigh. Here with me tonight is Mr. Jeremy Medlin, who's a representative of MI, and will present MI's involvement in this particular piece of property. Also here is Mr. Robbie Oldham, who's an engineer with Withers and Ravenel, been providing engineering services associated with this plan. And finally, Mr. Travis Fluit, who's a traffic engineer with Kimble Horn and Associates, and can talk about, in addition to the various other improvements that are being made by folks in the area, the improvements that are contemplated as part of this particular plan. Once again, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding. There are requirements with the ordinance that we have to submit evidence on to show that we satisfy those requirements, and that as a result of our satisfying those requirements, we should be entitled to the permit. Kevin noted there's no minor modifications. I joke with the client, I kind of feel like this is a unicorn. I, I'm never involved in a case where there isn't at least some sort of minor modification request, and so a minor bit of consolation for me. As Kevin mentioned, this is a plan to develop townhomes on roughly 18 and 1/2 acres in the Austin regional mixed-use area. This is a area, this is a particular piece of property that's planned and recommended for this type of, of use. With that, I will let Mr. Jeremy Medlin come forward and talk a little bit about the particular features of the use, as well as kind of what they anticipate the build-out to look like.
Hello, I'm Jeremy Medlin. I'm with MI Homes of Raleigh. I am the developer of this proposed project, and MI Homes would be the builder. Over the past nine years, we have, we have done several very successful communities in Cary, Greystone, Stone Bridge, Holland Farm, just to, just to mention a few. During this period, we have also partnered with the town on many public roadway improvements on Green Level Church Road, 1010, and Kildare. This partnership is actively ongoing, as Kevin mentioned. We just last year completed the realignment of Green Level Church Road and the O'Kelly intersection, and I would like to make out one clarification point. We did get DOT approval for the signal installation at Green Level Church in O'Kelly, so we are effectively out to bid now. And so I wanted to give you that update, because I felt like it had some bearing on this. Recently, we finished the single-family development of Evans Farm. For years, for four years, we coveted and watched this piece of ground that we're proposing to bring to you tonight. And last year, we were able to procure the property, and so we do control it and do own it. And we have every intention of making it a very successful, unique townhome community here in Cary. There are two, two product types. One would be an alley-driven product that is new to us, new to MI. And the other one is a standard, more, more standard front-loaded product. There will be multiple elevations, lots of diversity. When you take that into account, and factor in the sitting walls and the linear open When you take that into account, in factoring in the sitting walls and the linear open spaces and the public art, I think we're going to create something very special here. One thing I wanted to touch on, too, that I know that there's been lots of conversation about, not just in Cary, but also in Holly Springs, where I live, is the Wake County school system, and what is going on with the students and the capacity issues. Personally, on a personal note, I'm facing that myself. I wanted to go ahead and let you know that, you know, we have researched our buyer profile for this development, and typically, our townhome buyer is a young professional, sometimes a active adult retiree, and sometimes a young family. Recently, we just developed and sold in Amberly, another townhome community. We went through about 73 homes. Of those 73 homes, about 15 of those homeowners actually had children. Most of those children were either newborns, or they were toddlers. They were not of school age. Just wanted to make that point also because I felt like it may have some bearing on what, what your opinion is of this, this evening. On that note, I would like to thank you. I'd like to thank you for your support, and I'd like to also thank you for creating such a great town to, to work and to participate in, and we're looking forward to, to many years of working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd call Robbie Oldham to the stand.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Robbie Oldham with Withers and Ravenel. Office address here in Cary, 115 McKenan Drive. Have a bachelor's or a science degree in civil environmental engineering from NC State. Have been registered as a professional engineer for 14 years, been at Withers and Ravenel for over 16 years, and have over 19 years of experience in land development. As Kevin, Mr. Hales, has already gone through the site plan in his presentation, I'll hit on that and recap. This plan is to develop 152 townhomes on approximately 18 and 1/2 acres of land. The property is on R-40 and is located within the Evans Farm neighborhood portion of the Austin Regional Mixed Use Center. The Austin Plan permits the development of townhomes contemplated by the proposed plan. Point out just a little bit of history. Before we started the site plan, we met with town staff to discuss the design standards and intent of the Austin Plan and determined two primary components. First was to create a main street feel for Strindell Drive that would complement Rose Pine Drive. And the second was to create open space areas that would provide community gathering space. As shown on the plan, Strindell Drive was designed with on-street parking and open space on both sides of the, of the road that provides community gathering spaces. In addition to that, the buildings are alley-loaded, allowing frontage on Strindell Drive, so they're incorporated into the open space. Rather than being, you know, screened from the road, we want to incorporate that along Strindell Drive so it becomes a part of the community feel. This design, along with the seat walls and public art, creates a sense of community, provides community gathering space centrally located within the site. Now, I think it's key, too, we didn't pick an area that was unusable on the corner of the property. We looked at something that was centrally located that is easily accessible to all the residents there. Alley's are provided for the core of the site, which allows for the majority of the units to be rear-loaded, providing a main street feel throughout the site, not just along Strindell and Rose Pine. This plan includes 4.1 acres or 22% of the site of common open space and neighborhood greens. With respect to parking, the land development ordinance requires 418 spaces for residents and guests, and the plan provides 453 spaces, 93 being on-street parking. I think it's key, too, to point out that this calculation only includes the parking along the north side of Rose Pine Drive. So, you know, as it exists today, you've got parking on both sides of Rose Pine Drive. This only accounts for the parking on the north side. The south side will be reserved for the existing single-family development, as it, as it was intended. As indicated on the proposed plan and other materials submitted, the improvements have been designed in compliance with the requirements of the town's land development ordinance, including the development and design standards of Chapters 7 and 8, as well as the dedication improvement provisions of Chapter 8. Open space areas and buffers have been included along the perimeter of the site, except for Rose Pine, for reasons stated, in order to adequately protect other property. The development will include landscaping as required by the land development ordinance. As a townhome community and an area plan and/or build for other residential uses, the proposed use has no inherent qualities that would adversely impact adjacent properties. I believe the proposed plan adequately protects other property and residential uses only subject property from the potential adverse effects of the proposed development. With regards to harmony and unity with nearby properties, the subject property is surrounded by complementary uses. To the south of the site, the area has been developed by the same developer as the single-family home community. The addition of townhomes adjacent, adjacent to the single-family community will be in keeping with the recommendations for a mixture of housing types as contained and recommended in the Austin Plan. The parcels to the east of the subject property have partially been improved of single-family community, while the undeveloped portions are zoned consistent with the subject property in plan for similar uses. The areas to the north and west of the subject property include existing multifamily uses that would be traditional stone-water apartments and vacant parcels. As a result, the proposed townhome community will be in harmony with the development of nearby properties. The plan includes sufficient sidewalks to ensure no conflicts between vehicles and pedestrians, and the street, the street network has been designed in a manner that will result in vehicle speeds that are conducive to a single-family community. Sidewalks are provided on both sides of the streets. The plan includes three public access points, with two on Rose Pine Drive and one onto O'Kelly Chapel Road. The streets internal to the site have been designed so as to ensure that emergency vehicles have sufficient access to all the residences. As a result, the plan provides safe ingress and egress for emergency vehicles to the site. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll call Travis Fluid.
Travis Fluid with Kimble Horn and Associates, 3001 Weston Parkway here in Cary. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of North Carolina with over 10 years of experience in transportation engineering. I have a master's degree in civil engineering from the University of Texas. We are engaged to perform a traffic study with respect to the plan that has been submitted for approval. A copy of the traffic study is included with your agenda materials. As can be seen in the traffic study, we have recommended that this plan include the following improvements. At the intersection of O'Kelly Chapel Road and Alston Avenue, on eastbound O'Kelly Chapel Road, we plan to extend the exclusive left-turn lane that is being provided by the All-Stars Children's Academy Development to provide 160 feet of total storage and construct an exclusive right-turn lane with 120 feet of storage. On westbound O'Kelly Chapel Road, restripe the exclusive right-turn lane, also being provided by All-Stars Children's Academy, to a shared-through right lane. At the intersection of O'Kelly Chapel Road and Green Level Church Road, on westbound O'Kelly Chapel Road, extend the exclusive left-turn lane to provide full storage back to Alston Avenue, that's approximately 1,100 feet, and construct an exclusive right-turn lane to provide full storage back to Alston Avenue, again, approximately 1,100 feet. At the intersection of O'Kelly Chapel Road at Strindell Drive, that's the right-in, right-out site driveway on O'Kelly Chapel Road, on eastbound O'Kelly Chapel Road, construct an exclusive right-turn lane with 100 feet of storage, and O'Kelly Chapel Road widening along the site frontage to accommodate the future six-lane median-divided cross-section identified in the comprehensive transportation plan. The applicant has committed to making all of the foregoing recommended improvements. The traffic study also included improvements that are being made by others, which all should be in place in advance of the proposed development. Parkside Town Commons has completed all improvements that they plan to make at the intersection of NC-55 at O'Kelly Chapel Road, and the All-Stars Children's Academy, responsible for improvements at the intersection of O'Kelly Chapel Road and Alston Avenue, is currently under construction. Plans for the traffic signal at the intersection of O'Kelly Chapel Road and Green Level Church Road have been approved by NC DOT and the town. Those plans were sent out for bid yesterday, and with a expected bid review and opening of May 2nd, if not earlier. And we expect the signal to be complete and operational by the end of the summer. With the improvements being made by the applicant and others, the plan provides mitigation for traffic congestion impacts reasonably expected to be generated by the project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no further witnesses at this time. However, I would like to submit into evidence in support of the application a copy of the staff report, as well as the exhibits that are attached to it, and ask that the council take judicial notice of the contents of the town's land development ordinance, as well as the other adopted plans. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, I'll invite other speakers in support of the application to approach the podium one at a time. Next speaker. Anyone else? See no one? I'll invite cross-examinations of the witnesses who testified in support. Anyone to cross-examine? Now, I'd invite those who are opposed to the request. Invite the first speaker forward.
Good evening, council members, mayor, mayor per tem, district representatives, and members at large. I'm here on behalf of the community of Evans Farm. I represent some of the residents who live within the community currently, right now.
Could you give us your name, please?
Vishan Nikraj.
Thank you.
Address is 1119 Rose Pine Drive, so where the proposed development is occurring is actually one house away from my house. It's within plain view of where I currently reside and my neighbor next door. There's also a few other residents here tonight with me in support of what I'm going to speak about tonight. So I have a short, short, I guess, statement to put forth, and hopefully, we can see where this goes. So I stand before you as representatives of Evans Farm Community in Northwest Cary, and with the support of 70-plus community members, we have signatures on a current letter right now. We, the community, stand before you with concerns related to the proposed project of the Evans Farm townhome. At issue right now, there are items that weren't presented tonight. That includes the expansion of the tot lot inside Evans Farm. There's also the extension of Strindell Drive to O'Kelly Chapel and the extension of Volonia Loop, which were both mentioned. The top concerns of the community have been that traffic flow in and out of the community will change with the construction of these entrances, specifically Strindell Drive into O'Kelly Chapel. Right now, as, as it stands, the intersection of O'Kelly Chapel and Green Level Church is a haven for car accidents. Just last night, I passed by there at 6:40 PM, and there was a two-car accident, and it's well-known through the community in that area that we should not really drive through, that we should avoid it at all costs to, to protect ourselves, our families, and anybody else who may be traveling with us. Due to the proposed changes, we feel that some traffic may divert within to the community, so they may take Rose Pine Drive, they cut through the townhomes onto O'Kelly Chapel, and that's a big concern because along Rose Pine Drive, there's actually a community park that we have a lot of toddlers, a lot of children playing during the summer warmer months. We're actively out there. We also have a lot of elderly people. We have a lot of residents who have extended family who live in India, or, or who come over to overseas to the U.S., and they spend many months here in this community, and they're visible walking throughout the entire neighborhood during the warmer months when they are visiting. We also have concerns with the common area that's being proposed. So currently, we, as residents, purchased our homes with the understanding that there's a common area, which is currently a park with a playground and a few other amenities, and we were, we bought into the community believing that that was our exclusive area to use as part of the information we received from M.I. And as mentioned within the letter we received as residents from the town, there are proposed changes from M.I., and as community members, we feel that they're insufficient. The current state of the area was, was proposed to us with the thought that there would just be exclusive use by the, the people within the homes, and there's about 147 homes in the community today. With the addition of the townhomes, we feel that that increase of, of an additional 152 homes or families, households, could have a huge impact on this common area. The common area sits at .86 acres, and we feel that, that right now, there's, there's not enough facilities there. What we have done is we've engaged the builder, and we've spoken specifically to Jeremy Medlin, to see what we can do as a community to maybe see what can be put in there in addition to what they've proposed, since we, as a community, feel that it's insufficient to meet our needs. We are currently and actively working with Jeremy, and as a result, it's our understanding that as part of the approval tonight, the plans proposed by Jeremy for, for the, the expansion of the tot lot and some of the changes to our common area, we, we would like to stand against that. We believe that, since we are in, in discussions with them, that we want to come to closure on, on what's being proposed by M.I. before we see the plans go ahead and, and actually are approved. We also have concerns with the traffic going through Evans Farm and taking Rose Pine Drive to get out to O'Kelly Chapel. As previously mentioned, there is a lot of traffic through Green Level Church and O'Kelly Chapel right now that's, that's, I guess, experiencing a lot of accidents. There's a lot of, lot of, I guess, issues going through the intersection, so we feel once this approval goes through and that road gets extended, that people will consider taking the path through the neighborhood to get onto O'Kelly Chapel. During rush hour on Green Level Church approaching O'Kelly Chapel, there's usually cars backed up down Green Level Church, and they have an opportunity to turn in the Rose Pine Drive and now get, get to O'Kelly Chapel very quickly if they wanted to do so. I, I just wanted to state that we, we're in support of working with M.I. We hope that we can come to some type of agreement with the common area. They've been amicable to several other items we've brought up to them, and we really appreciate that. But at this time, I think we, we, we don't agree with the changes that they've proposed. And if you don't mind, I'd like to ask the residents of Evans Farm who have joined me here tonight to stand up just to show who's here with me. And again, this is just a small representation. We have over 70 signatures on a letter that we have circulated. Many of the folks we've tried to contact have not been home because we all work during the day, so we haven't been able to provide all the signatures, but at this time, we have 70 signatures going against the proposed changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Now invite the next speaker forward, if there are other speakers. Please try not to be repetitive. Thank you. Move to your left, please. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and all the council members. My name is Nagaraja Triproju. I am a resident of this community. Y.M.I. Homes is one of the best builders. Thank you. I'm glad that they're constructing, they got this opportunity to build. I have no complaints about that. But the building, the quality, everything is good, but the communication, we didn't get an opportunity to express any of our views. That's the reason why I'm coming here. So I'm primarily talking as a parent, not as a legal, or with any qualifications. So I live on the corner of Rose Pine and Strindell, opposite to the play area, a small open area, .86 acres. And my objection to share with the adjacent community that's coming up. We have 147 homes right now. Most of them have small kids, and most of them are IT professionals, so, who are working in the nearby biotic area. So the, the area that we have right now and the facilities are not at all adequate for the kids. I see, I, I, I'm just opposite of the park, so I work from home, so I see from morning to evening, and I see different groups of people, different nationalities, different groups. They, they use the play area in different times because what we have, not even 10 kids can comfortably play right now. And the proposed changes by, or the extra additional facilities proposed by M.I. Homes are not adding any benefits to us. So we have 147 homes, and then not even 10 kids can play. With the proposed new changes of adding 152 homes to share that area is going to be very disadvantageous for, for all the kids who are using that common area. So I firmly oppose sharing that area with the next community. Even if you use all the area just for kids, it's not going to, going to be enough. It's very small, and... It's very small and the traffic on the roads is very dangerous. I'm really afraid we'll be hearing bad news about something and we'll all be guilty of if we don't take any action and not protect the kids. Vehicles go at 50 speed and there is, between the road and the current park area, there is no protection. Some kids, if they run on the road, it's very scary. And the other thing, we are opening, with this new construction, we are opening a road which is extending the Strandell Drive, which is less than half mile from a newly constructed mall, which, with a movie theater and lots of, a bowling facility. So the traffic is going to be a lot in the near future. And we are less than a mile from the freeway. So thinking worst, this would, I mean, for anyone with bad intention, from the kids' area to disappearing in the freeways is less than maybe two to three minutes. So what kind of protection, protective measures we are going to add for the kids? You know, I would like to make a note so we don't consciously feel guilty in the future. So I oppose sharing the area or coming up with something a lot more than what we're offered here. Thank you.
Thank you. We've heard testimony in opposition about the shared play area. We've heard testimony about traffic issues and concerns, several of them. Is there any additional testimony that we have not heard in opposition? Seeing none, we'll move forward. And I'll call on the attorney to cross-examine.
Mr. Mayor, I don't intend to cross-examine, but I would object to some of the things that were offered. I believe as evidence, the first speaker mentioned a petition. I would object to the council's consideration of the petition because, A, it wasn't submitted and even if it were, it would be an admissible hearsay. And second, with respect to the traffic concerns that were demonstrated or offered by each of the witnesses, I would object to admission of that testimony into the record. Neither of the speakers established themselves as traffic engineers or experts and neither of them established that they had performed any analysis to support their conclusions about concerns related to traffic. They were merely speculative in nature. And finally, with respect to the common space, again, there hasn't been any analysis performed with respect to the common space. And I would note for the benefit of the council that the plan that's before you satisfies the code requirements for open space associated with this particular plan.
Thank you. This time I'll ask staff if they have any additional testimony they'd like to add.
I'll do a little background because I didn't mention it because it was such a small part of the plan. The recreation area for Evans Farm subdivision is located immediately across the street, Rose Pine Drive, from the proposed townhome development. When it was developed by Yama Homes, they came forward to town, staff and staff approved. It's a very innovative idea when they were doing it. It's a community garden. It's raised beds, fruit trees around the outside, very small play area, some shelters and picnic tables. What they're proposing to do, my understanding from the applicant, is that the community garden has been less successful than they hoped and severely underutilized. And it sounds like the testimony, the neighbors support that and that they use it as a community park and play area rather than gardening. So they did come forward, proposed to add some additional playground equipment, change some of the raised beds out to additional picnic tables, that type of stuff, just general, small changes. I will agree with what Mr. Barron said, that the open space requirements for this development are actually satisfied by the two areas in green in regards to the community design manual and the Austin ACCP plan in regards to the size and location. And also, we relocated the public art, I didn't mention this before, relocated the public art, which was pedestrian-oriented from the intersection, originally showing at the intersection of Green Level Church and O'Kelly, to a site more appropriate seeming to staff for pedestrian-oriented art internal to the site. So that's all I have for clarification.
Okay, very good. This time I'll invite cross-examination of the towns witness. Seeing none, we'll keep moving. I'll ask if anyone has sworn objections to the incompetent evidence or testimony. Does either party have evidence that has been presented tonight to warrant a continuance of this hearing? Okay? We'll now move into a deliberative phase of the hearing and I'll open it up to council members for comments or questions. Ms. Robinson?
Okay, I have a couple of questions, a couple of comments. This map is so tiny. The white areas that are going along that thoroughfare and then are over on both of the side streets, is that common space, but it's not being used for the open space requirement? What is that white area?
You're talking about the wider areas here? That is just community open space. It's owned by the HOA. It's not being used to calculate the gathering space areas, the plazas and green requirement of the ACCP. However, it's there, one, to provide an additional linear park field and engagement along that street and, two, to meet some of the, the Austin plan's a little unique and it doesn't have setbacks. It has build-to lines. And so in order to build the build-to lines and not bring the units right up against the street, they chose to create a common open space and then the build-to line is off the actual property. So a couple of reasons for that.
Okay, I see. And then what is the requirement, either in our LDO or the Alston Activity Center, whichever they need to comply to for the amount of open space or common area space?
It's one plaza or green for every 10 developable acres. And since they're just under 20 acres, one and a fraction would be two. So they have their two plazas and greens, the minimum size is 1,200 square feet. So they provided two 1,200 square foot areas. They calculated, plus they had the additional area, which they could have counted if they wanted.
Okay. Just a side comment, I think we need to go back and look at our standards to have a minimum of 1,200 square feet for a gathering space. I mean, how big is 1,200 square feet? That's not very much.
I'll point out that it has been changed in the general LDO.
Uh-huh. It's like 4,500 or something? No?
It's 2,500 at the largest, which is 15 acres and larger, which this would have qualified for. But since the Austin plan has its own open space requirements, that would require rezoning to change. We'd have to rezone the Austin area plan to change that requirement.
Okay. I just have a lot of concern with the way that we're requiring the amount of open space. It concerns me that we have basically the potential of having 299 units here with this little gathering space. And if the community thinks they have a problem now and they have toddlers, wait until all their toddlers are nine through 12 years old and they're all trying to hang out and play, and where are they going to do it? You know, and I look at these older communities in Cary and we have much more ample play space for each community than what I'm seeing here. So it just, that's an aside. I think we just need to go back and take a look at that. As far as their concern regarding traffic, I know they're not traffic engineers, but when you go through the Development Review Commission, will you be looking at anything to slow down traffic? Because having that green space on either side of that thoroughfare, I imagine cars will want to travel down that pretty quickly. And since they have so much space, it looks like an obvious, easy fix would be putting in little tiny traffic circles like we have in Weatherstone at those two intersections right there. Because that would certainly slow people down and help with the traffic flow substantially. So is there any kind of opportunity to look at traffic calming during the development review?
I'm not aware of any concerns that were raised during the review. I will say that on-street parking in and of itself does act as a traffic calming device. And there is on-street parking along Strandell Drive north of that cross street. I don't know what the name of it is. So that does some of it. Jerry, do you have anything to add? Nothing else was discussed.
Other comments, Ms. Robinson?
Just a question about, I understand that the applicant already received the go-ahead from NCDOT for the light at Green Level Church Road and O'Kelly Chapel. If I understood that correctly, is that the light that you were speaking of?
That is the light at the intersection of O'Kelly Chapel and the realigning Green Level Church Road.
So does the applicant do the realignment of Green Level Church?
The applicant, or the realignment has been accomplished. It is realigned and they are now bidding.
So what happened to that corner? That's what I'm, is it just right-of-way? Does it stay? What happens to that corner? Because it's not included.
It's included in the side area. There are two areas, if you heard Mr. Odom's testimony, he said 18 and a half acres. Our data says 19.7. The reason is, there are two areas of former right-of-way that are being, either have been abandoned or are being abandoned. One is here, there was additional right-of-way. I'm assuming anticipating realignment of Austin Avenue at one point. That has been abandoned. That is in the town of Cary and that is included in the side area. Their streetscape goes up to the corner and their buffer goes long and that's just being left as open area. The other area, as we talked about briefly, is still in process of being abandoned. So it has not been abandoned yet, so there's no parcel to be annexed. But they are abandoning, are working through the state to abandon the former Green Level Church Road right-of-way. Half of it would go back to this development, half of it would go to the development of the property on the other side. There's no development plan for that yet, but there is a triangular-shaped, slightly over an acre piece of property here that could be redeveloped in the future.
And then who, who does that refer to? Who gets that property? Where does that go? Once it's abandoned, does it go to the?
Basically, the right-of-way is split between adjacent property owners.
Okay.
So half of it would go to this development, half of it would go to the property owner on the other side, this triangular piece right here.
Could they resell, could Yama Homes sell their little portion for some kind of like commercial development, like a gas station or something there? Or are they tied to having that included in their parcel here?
Right now, it's included in their parcel, so it would be.
Okay, so they'd have to go through a whole rezoning if they took that out?
I don't know about a rezoning. It's in the Austin plan.
Oh, okay.
Not as commercial though, right?
It's not in the Austin plan, okay. It's in the Activity Center. There's an Activity Center that sits on top of this intersection. There was at one time, the Horton's Creek ACCP, in addition to the Horton's Creek PDD, included commercial development on these portions right here. They could not today come in and develop commercial. They would have to come into a mixed-use rezoning under today's ordinance. So you would see it in some way, shape or form. My guess is, even if you were to change the ordinances, they would have a very difficult time developing that with our streetscape standards and buffer standards. So unless a lot of our regulations changed, one way or the other, you'd probably see it.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Kevin, for great clarification there. That really helped. Generally, I like what's before us. I think it complies with the Austin Avenue Plan very well. Like it's been mentioned, it's a pretty unique plan. And I love what they've done with the linear open space stuff, trying to get that Main Street feel, the on-street parking. It's a lot of what was the Austin Avenue Plan. I do agree with Ms. Robinson, however, on some of the traffic issues. I don't know that I want roundabouts at every one of those intersections, but maybe one, something like that. Or some other type of, you know. I also do agree that the on-street parking typically serves as a deterrent, but then it can also serve as a distraction or, you know, hindrance. People walk out in between cars and stuff like that. I mean, I hear some of the complaints about the playlot and such, but to me, it kind of seemed like they didn't even have a playlot to start with. It was a community garden and stuff and it's kind of been turned into a playlot. So I had to complain about not having enough playlot. I mean, it complies with all the town's rules, requirements, and they've committed to all the traffic improvements and everything else that's required upon them. I would have a really hard time saying no to this tonight. The townhome product, as far as, you know, kids using the playspaces and such, I mean, we heard it tonight, we've heard it time and time again, that townhome products typically don't have that many kids. Young professionals, young starting-out families, infants to, you know, preschool-aged kids or, you know, empty nesters or folks that want to retire. So, you know, I hate to say it, but the playlot thing is not that big a concern to me. And I just keep going back, it's the Austin Avenue. It's kind of that second downtown feel that you're kind of going for where, you know, things are a little different. They're a little tighter, they're a little unique. And I'd have a real hard time saying no to this one tonight. But the one thing that, I guess, gives me a little hesitation is, you know, there appears to be a good discussion going between the adjoining residents and the developer. And I kind of hate to stop that, but, you know, I mean, we've got a plan before us that I'm expected to make a decision on. And based on everything that I've heard, I would have a hard time saying no.
Other comments?
I just have a question, if that's right. It's a right-in, right-out of the main entrance to Evans Farm Townhomes. Is that what I heard? Is that correct?
The extension of Strandell Drive to O'Kelly Chapel will be, there's a median, and there will be a median in O'Kelly Chapel Road. So it will be restricted to right-in, right-out.
And there's an entrance across the street. Is that the daycare across the street? Is that also right-in, right-out?
It will be. I don't know that it is right now.
And also median divided?
It's already, it's currently median divided. It's actually a shared entrance between Tradition and Stonewater. And this parcel is Stonewater MR3. It's currently under development as a second daycare center, Kitty Academy.
So if, I'm just trying to think of a parent, I come up O'Kelly Chapel, I drop my kid off. I can only make a right-out. That means I've got to swing over to the far-left lane to make a U-turn to go back to 55?
I would recommend you going to Green Level Church, going through the signalized intersection and turning right into the daycare up here. If you're trying to get, you're talking about trying to get to the daycare over here?
No, I'm trying to get back to 55 because I'm ready to go to work, right?
It's like you're coming out here.
I'm sorry. Yes, across, so, right, I'm coming up. I'm just trying to figure out what kind of traffic are we going to have? Where we have a median-divided road, we've got houses on one side, we've got daycare on the other. People are coming in and out of the daycare. And then this is a major employment center. People are going to want to get back to 55 to get back on 540 or 55 to go to work, right? So they're going to have to do a U-turn at Green, the new light that Yama is putting in, correct? In order to get back to 55? There's no, because they can't make a left to go back.
That is a right-in, right-out, I believe, for the daycare.
Right, which means that they're going to go west.
That way, or you would go out onto Green Level Church Road, go north to Kit Creek and go that way.
And then go all the way around?
There's a second entrance.
Yeah, no way.
Again, it's not this plan. There's a second entrance up here that would be right-in, right-out and you would go north on.
Probably the safest way is, probably not what anybody will do.
All about signalized intersections.
Yeah, I just wanted to make one point about the number of children that townhomes generate. I know that the standard is that townhomes don't generate a lot of kids. But in Western Cary, we're seeing that that doesn't apply. We're getting a lot of kids there. And so somebody from our staff, I think, somebody from planning, Jeff, I think, is who I was talking to, is working with Wake County to try to get a micro-understanding or an understanding of the micro-area and what kind of student generation we actually have for townhomes in Western Cary. Because it's a much higher number than I think you would say across the board, you know, what you normally get.
Other comments, Ms. Anderson?
Well, you know, I must be listening with a different ear tonight. You know, I don't argue about the quality of the project. I think public art, linear open space, sitting walls, they all sound great. But the best traffic mitigation is less density and this is 52% more dense than if they built 100 townhomes. And I just don't see any evidence that says it's absolutely necessary to have 152 to make this special. I think it can be just as special and perhaps a little more so with 100 townhomes and not 152.
Other comments?
Oh, and I would just add, if I might, that young families become older families. And just because you move in with an infant doesn't mean you're not there six years later when that child's in first grade.
Yeah, that is true.
And my only other concern is this is an extension of Evans Farm, right? This is an add-on to Evans Farm. It's not, it's not a separate community, right? The other.
Is it like Phase Two?
It's like, did I get that wrong? The other one's called Evans Farm?
It's the same development. It has a similar name. I can't speak to the private arrangements between developers, HOA, with Evans Farm Townhome and Evans Farm subdivision. That's a private arrangement I couldn't speak to.
What's the density?
But I'm just speaking as a, as the average citizen. They're both called Evans Farm. One's townhomes, one's single-family homes. And what we're seeing is more homes in this second phase, because it's 152. The other one was 147. With less amenities and less open space and more people. And I believe that Citizen's right. There's no place for the kids to play. So they're going to come down to the newly renovated tot lot. I mean, part of me wants to see what could happen.
to the newly renovated totlot. I mean, part of, part of me wants to see what could happen if the applicant were able to give, have a little bit more time to work with the other, the other part of their subdivision, to see what they might be able to come up with. I mean, I'm, I just think that this would be a win-win for the community, because it's just an extension of the community. It's, it's not a new community, and we have these, we don't want warring factions. Well, we've already had, you know, Neighbors Against Neighbors, and I, and I don't think any of us at the table want that. I'd just like to see a little bit more discussion happen, to see how this could be a win-win and expand the discussion so that this extension of the neighborhood is as friendly to families as the...
Mr. Yar?
Yeah, I have a concern, the same concerns that are raised, nothing new. Just, I know we meet the requirement of the open space and everything, and that's, I do think we need to look at that requirement maybe again.
If you'll permit me, I'll clarify, because I know that Jason, Mr. Barron's twitching back there. I gave you the requirement, which is 1,200 square feet. They are actually proposing a third of an acre between the two. One's .15 acres and one's .12 acres, so 6,600 and 5,300 square feet respectively. So they're not providing just the minimum, so you're aware, Kevin.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. That's a little bit better. Still, looking at this, it, to me, just doesn't seem to be enough, although it is, I guess. And I also, I, I had same conversations as you had, Mrs. Robinson, about the, the townhomes that we're seeing out in West Cary and the whole, the whole demographics out there. It's, I certainly believe that there's going to be fewer schoolchildren in townhomes than there are in single-family homes, but I don't think it's going to be quite that extent that we, that we see, that we, 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 we think. So I have those concerns, although I see it meets requirements, and the one day, one way to alleviate those concerns would be lower density, I guess, you know? So, I mean, your, your comment was quite good, Mrs. Akon. I mean, I think that's, that is one way to maybe resolve some of those concerns, even though on paper meets our requirements.
I under, I understand and appreciate the concerns regarding the density. My fear is if you lower, as a fear, it's not fact, it's just, you know, reduce the density, fine, you're going to reduce a lot of the quality, too. That, that's a fear, you know? If, you can do the linear open space and the sitting walls and the public art and a lot of these wonderful, beautiful things to get that top-notch quality that we're going for in Cary, if you get a little more density. If you reduce the density, I don't know, I don't know if it remains economically viable. So I worry about a reduction in the quality of the product, because it's, it's the same confusion I've had since I've held, since I've been on P&amp;Z before council, is, you know, yeah, maybe feels too dense, but what's the right number? You know, if you pulled 20 units out, does it really change much of anything? Might give you a little more totlot, might give you a little more open space, but it might also reduce the quality of product. And that's a concern of mine. I don't, don't know what to fix. It might just be too dense, no matter what.
Well, you know, what's, what's the right number? Right now, it's 100. It wouldn't be coming to us if it wasn't going to be more than 100. 100 is what's, you know, acceptable before you have to come to quasi-judicial. And while the financial end of this may mean less, I would hope not. I would, you know, I would hope that's not true, but I, I just think by increasing what's allowable now by 52% to say it would have public art and it would have, you know, I'm not comfortable with that. I, but I hear you, and I don't disagree with you necessarily, but I, I'm not comfortable with that.
I appreciate that.
And just briefly, if I could address Ms. Akon's comment, and I think you got this, but I just wanted to make sure. The, the 100 units is a magic number only in the sense that that is what triggered this to be a quasi-judicial hearing. They are entitled under their zoning to develop up to the 152 units that they have here.
But they're not asking for a rezoning, right? They're asking us to make the decision without a rezoning.
Yeah, well, they're entitled, under our, you know, like, they've, they've met the criteria to, of complying with the LDO, and that this number of units is acceptable under our other requirements. So the 100 is just a trigger to be here to look at the factors.
So it could be less, then the magic number might actually be less than 100, then? If there were a magic number, which there isn't, and I appreciate the clarification.
Okay. Let me ask a question. This is a site plan review. Do we have the authority to deny the project if we think it's too dense, it has too many units, there's not adequate open space or whatever? Do we have that authority?
If you could look at the development plan criteria, which Kevin may have on the slide, and they're in your staff report. So these are the standards that, that they need to satisfy. So if you are inclined to deny the project tonight, you would need to find a, it would need to be for one of the six reasons here that's on the screen tonight.
Help me out with this. I'm sorry.
Go for it.
Since it's quasi-judicial, we hadn't done a whole lot of these. Do we have the authority to table this, correct?
To table it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I would recommend, yeah, I would recommend that we table this instead of jumping for denial, because I think this is a good product that can, can succeed. But I think that what we're hearing across the table, if you can go back to the picture, Kevin, it looks like it is difficult to achieve, to, to say that we think that it adheres to two, three, number two, three, and four. When you look at this plan, I don't know that it is necessarily harmonious with the community, that it has the safe vehicular access. I think there's, I think there's some tweaking that could be done, and I'm not saying remove 20 units necessarily, but I do think that the applicant could really improve this, so it's a place that people are very proud of, that'll, it'll age with the families that choose to move in there, and their kids age up. I would love, I'd love to see it be something where it's not one of these communities, which we have seen in different parts of Cary, unfortunately, some of them in Western Cary, where there's no place for a child to play.
So I, I agree. I think it's very close. That's the thing. I want, I'd love to give the applicant an opportunity to get it across the finish line.
So I'm, your process question, it's actually continuance, because it's a public hearing, right?
That's, that's just what I was going to address, to make sure the term of art is correct. If you, if you table it, that's different than continuance. If you continue it to a date certain, you don't have to go through the same advertising-type requirements that you do if you table. If you table it, you essentially have to start over again.
Which means you have to present everything.
And there was another comment.
But you would want to continue it to a date certain.
Right.
And our quasi-judicial meetings are the first Thursday of every month, so that would be easy to do.
Yeah.
And if we got to the first Thursday...
And if the applicant is...
And it's, it's still not done, we can continue it to the next one.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Mr. Hale's finger keeps going.
We've reached the hour time limit. I think council wants to continue.
Feels like the 11th hour, and it more or less is.
So if council's all right, would you like to invite the applicant forward and hear their thoughts?
Or their agent, yeah.
Mr. Barron? Oh, unless, our attorney had something to say.
We're just discussing possible dates, if you're inclined to continue the hearing.
Briefly, I want to note that the, the Austin plan is, is the only sec, the only section in the Austin plan that specifies allowable uses and limits is Section 2, which does so by traffic analysis zone. And in the, this is in TAS 7, these two properties that we're talking about are referred to as TAS 7 in the Austin plan. And, and TAS 7 calls for, in the Austin plan, up to 660 residential units. What is being proposed between the single-family that's been developed and the townhomes that are proposed now is a total of 299 units. So based upon the analysis that was done in the TAS plan, I would point out for the benefit of the council that these two properties are only developing at roughly half of what was assumed when the Austin plan was performed. With that said, and even though I believe we otherwise satisfied the requirements of the ordinance for approval, my client is, is, would certainly prefer to have the case continued as opposed to have it denied. I, I can't guarantee we can come back with a, a, with wholesale changes in, in how this plan is, is structured, but if I'm hearing the council correctly, you, you at least want to give them an opportunity to take a fresh look at density and see what can be done to reduce density as part of this development plan. Is that, am I understanding?
Sort of. There are some council members who have a concern with density.
That's a fair statement, yeah.
There are some council members who have a concern with traffic roadway movement. There are some council members who have a concern with open space, play areas, and such. Did I miss anything?
Yeah, and I think, I think they're intertwined. I mean, I really think that the density is very closely tied to the play space, the, you know, the congregation space. You know, it used to be that every one of these communities seemed to have a swimming pool. We don't see swimming pools anymore, for whatever reason, I don't know why. I, I have to wonder where these children play in the summertime, where they go. You know, it, it just begs the question of where are these children hanging out? And I understand that the Austin Activity Center calls for the potential for more density, but when we look at this, there's the potential for this to be a great community, and you're almost there. And I think that you all should strive for. I think it's going to be better for your market when you go to, you know, advertise. I think people are going to be more inclined to want to live here, and I think people are going to want, you know, it's, it's just going to be a place that's going to speak well for MI Homes, if you all just do it right. So I think you're close.
And if I could just clarify, it sounds like then the main concerns are related to Criteria 2, about the plan adequately protecting other property or residential uses located on the same property from the potential adverse effects of the development. Is that...
Two, yeah.
And three.
Three, if you want to put them back up there.
Okay.
You want to have Kevin put that screen back up again? Yeah, I had concern with three, because, you know, if, if it has, you know, more than the number of units that are already there with not a lot of space, that's not harmonious to the existing community. And four, I do worry about the, the safe circulation for vehicles and pedestrians. I think that there's going to be a potential for people to just kind of cruise fast on that road, that main road, and I would love to see you do something that could slow down traffic, and I'd prefer it not to be a hump, but, because I don't, you know, I just don't love those as much. But there's, you have, you have some space there, you could really do something good.
Could I ask a clarifying question? I'm not sure who the proper person to answer this is. It might be Kevin. So, I know Mr. Barron's always right, so I just want to not question you, but just want to understand. So this, the parcel to the south and the Evans Farm that already exists and this one together could be built to a density of 600 units. Is that what I heard, or did I mishear that? Because I got to tell you, that doesn't...
660. Remember the idea of the Austin plan was to increase density and provide a much more urban environment than your typical suburban. That was the whole plan. So when you, when you talk about reducing density, you're not going to get spaces between the buildings, you're not going to get additional front yard space, or, because there are, there are development standards built into the Austin plan to bring those buildings up to the street and to reduce the space between them. This, these, the reason, some of the reason you have additional green space on the ends of the buildings is because we actually made them bring the buildings closer together to meet the Austin plan. They had 20 feet between the buildings, which is your standard utility easement. The Austin plan calls for eight to 10, I believe. I don't have it directly in front of me, but it's much less than 20. And so in order to meet some of the development standards in the design zone in which this property is located, we crush those together. And that's just based on zoning. That would require a plan amendment to, to change the Austin plan.
And I think the problem is, is when you do a plan like the Austin plan or any of our other plans, you set about thinking about it in concept, and you, you, you create these ideas in concept, but once they start getting in the ground and you have one subdivision that exists and a road that gets realigned, you start looking at the reality, and sometimes those concepts really don't mash at all. They're incongruent with what's on the ground. And that's where I think we need to, you know, step back and look at these, these concepts that we've, we've put forward.
The other thing, I think, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to add to that, that, you know, if you look back at TAS 7, it's also supposed to have, you know, 14, you know, 100 square feet of office space and, you know, all these things that just aren't going to be there.
Yeah, that's an excellent point.
Why do we have to adhere to one? Well, and the other thing I think about, and I forget which citizen it was, that brought us the aerial overview of this area. And when you look at that and you see how densely people are packed in, you have to question whether it's right to, just because it aligns with, you know, five out of seven of these, if it's the right thing to do. I mean, you've got to think about what, what it ends up being like. And I, and I still maintain that the best traffic mitigation is not to put so many cars on the road. So I, you know, I don't want to do anything that's inconsistent with what we, you know, have the authority to do or what we're supposed to be doing, but it just makes me really uncomfortable.
Other comments? Question for Mr. Silverstein. In quasi-judicial matters, we have, I'll call it a gag order. Can't talk about it, can't discuss it.
Exactly.
If we continue this public hearing, that's still in place, we can't talk to the residents, can't talk to the developer, can't talk to each other?
That's absolutely true.
Okay.
They can talk to each other.
They can, but don't contact us.
I just want to make that point.
You heard what we're thinking. We can't talk about that.
The, the best way to, to think of it really is that you have to make your decision based on testimony that's presented in a quasi-judicial proceeding. And if you talk to anyone outside that, that forum, then it taints the quasi-judicial process.
Okay. So before I entertain a motion from council, I do want to give Mr. Barron and our town attorney and our staff an opportunity to add any additional information before we...
I can see the, the road ahead of me here, so I've got nothing else to say at this point.
It's not your first rodeo, right?
Not his first one tonight.
We briefly discussed dates, if you're inclined to continue this to another meeting. May 1st is your next regularly scheduled quasi-judicial council meeting. Have we already canceled it?
Karen says no.
Karen says no.
June 1st.
We've already canceled it.
Oh, we already canceled it. So the next one, then, is June the 10th.
Well, let me ask a question. We canceled it because we didn't have any cases to review, right?
And we were planning to have a work session in its place on that date.
What kind of type of year?
So I was going to see if we wanted to entertain having both the work session, Karen, and, and continuing this, assuming this wouldn't take three hours, doing this and also having the work session on the same evening, but I'll have to defer to the clerk's office on that as to if that's...
Okay, I think that's, I mean, that's at least my preference, because I think it's wrong for us to, to continue this and then make the guy wait two months.
That I agree with.
My question would be how much time would he think he needs? I mean, oftentimes, we think a month is a long time, and they, they need more than that, so it's...
What do you want?
We're ready to come back in May.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think, given the, the nature of the conversation, that the potential changes would be limited in scope to begin with, so I don't think, I don't feel like we'd be presenting an entirely new plan that would warrant a whole lot of conversation.
And the clerk's office was fine, if that's what you all want to do, to schedule this, continuance of this hearing, and then also find time to do the work session on the same evening.
I just had a question about, how long is the work session planned for, Karen? The typical two hours?
Uh, one hour, it's one topic.
One hour, okay. And, and it's only because...
Which topic?
Yeah. Four hours.
I apologize. I didn't see the other finger. Two hours, Imagine Cary is the topic.
Yeah. And the only reason is, and of course, we've been at this for almost four hours now, so I just, you know, sometimes we're kind of beat up after a work session. I just want to make sure you get your fair, you know, shake. But, you know, like I said, we've already been at this four hours, and we're as fresh as we're going to be, so...
Which will come first? Will the quasi-judicial come first or the work session?
Do the quasi first for the applicant.
I agree. Do the quasi first.
I think that's fair, yeah.
Quasi-judicial first at 6:30 is what I'm hearing. All we need to know for tonight, actually, is what date and time we're going to continue the quasi-judicial to, and we can figure out the work session.
Do you want to make a motion?
May the 1st.
Make a motion to continue to May 1st.
At 6:30 PM.
At 6:30 PM.
A second.
Motion and a second discussion. All in favor?
Oh, wait, I'll just say really fast. Residents specifically asked us, said they wish they had more time to work with the developer. Now is your time. Okay, so four weeks from now, don't ask us for more time. Now is the time, so just make sure they know that. Okay.
And also, you know, compromise the two-way street.
Yeah, and we, and we cannot talk to residents about this, so...
Compromise the two-way street.
Because we'll have to recuse ourselves and...
Yeah, I mean, the, this is discussion.
Let me say something, Jack.
If I, what I recall about Austin is we had continued and delayed it for months, if not years, to get it right. And the whole thought process, from my memory, was that's where we wanted the density, because that's where it was, closer to the employment centers, and that was kind of like its own little mini downtown. And I understand the point you're making about, I mean, if there's anyone, if it was a traditional suburban development, I'd be right there saying, yeah, yeah. But we put so much energy into this area for exactly this. You know, I'm just saying, I think, I think we have to just remember, we've got the, the seven standards we got to look at.
Things change. I mean...
They change, but that's a big change. I mean, when you say, let's put it all out there, and we're putting it there, it's like when you said, look at the aerial, it's like, yeah. Well, no, I'm just saying, I, I don't know... Well, no, I'm just saying, I don't know what's right or wrong, I'm just saying that there was a lot of energy that this is the area that was going to be dense. Now, if we're changing that because we're finding there's different results happening, I respect that, because, you know, I, you know the arguments I've made on my, on my end on the more traditional neighborhoods and the density there. So, I mean, I understand the point, but I just think it's fair to say that we put a lot of time in that Austin development and continued it on and on and on, and had all the work sessions and everything to get it right.
Well, I mean, some of the shopping centers that are coming in are not what the Austin Activity Center originally envisioned, I mean...
Those are fair points, have you know?
You know, everything's different, and I would say one of the greatest weaknesses of our Northwest area plan is the little amount of common community gathering space. We have scads and scads of units and not enough places for people to congregate. We have great greenways, that is one asset out there, it's great multi-use paths and greenways, but we don't have enough places for people to just take a deep breath and go, huh, okay, you know? And I go to some of those neighborhoods, my kids play, have friends in some of these neighborhoods, and I go to play dates, and when I drop off my son, one in particular, I think, where in the world are these two little boys going to play? Because it might be out on Cary Glen Boulevard, I have no idea. It's just, to me, it's not, you know, comparable to what our standards in Cary have been, and I think it's time for us to really go back and reexamine what we're doing and raise our standards substantially over what we have today.
And in fairness, I still haven't come to grips with the concept of play date.
It's kind of like a golf date, Jack.
Yes.
So we have a motion and a second. Any additional comments? All in favor of the motion to continue this public hearing, quasi-judicial public hearing? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries six to one. And since we have closed this public, this, we've continued this quasi-judicial public hearing, it'll be closed once we open it up, finish our business. I'm trying to say that right.